This is a work session of the Mayor and Grove Council, the Seaside Park County Ocean Study in New Jersey, held on Thursday, July 18, 2024, advertised for 6:00 p.m., pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meeting Act. Adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Roger on June 28, 2024. Notice of the meeting in the governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the Municipal Court.
Councilmember Anfield?
I have a different one.
Councilmember Condon?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Cratt?
Here.
Councilmember Rattan?
Here.
Council President Will?
Here.
Mayor Mearsen?
Thank you.
The first item for informational purposes, those issuance of a landfill check to Ocean County, that's on the bill list, and that came about as a result of the necessity of the Ocean County to receive same in a timely manner, but that's for everyone's informational purposes only. There are a few items next on the work session agenda to go through as reasonably and quickly as possible, and obviously what we had talked about and focused upon was to be a roundtable discussion between the governing body and the Bayfront Advisory Committee, all whom are here today. We welcome them and thank them for their help. So as such, this was already advertised for a public meeting work session as well, with the regular meeting to follow. The items on the agenda, there's a discussion first of a memorandum of understanding with Ocean County Sheriff's Department for use of their training facility. It's listed as Resolution 224-235 for consideration on the regular meeting this evening as well. I think that came up at the last meeting. We talked about that literally just arrived at the date of the meeting, and that is in accordance with past practices. And the county, there's a cover letter from the Deputy Director, Quinn, the Board of Commissioners, related there, too. And that training center is open for use by all the municipalities, including ours. Any questions, comments from the council on that item? The next is discussion of a revised lightning emergency action plan. That, too, is listed on the regular meeting agenda, it's Resolution 224-236 for consideration of the regular meeting with the activation of the lightning emergency action plan necessitated. You must have in place a actual procedures which we have now proposed and adopted, as we had procedures previously, and this set of procedures was run by the Ocean County Joint Insurance Fund as well, as a lightning emergency action plan. Any questions, comments? Yes?
Yeah. On the lightning emergency plan, I know a lot of people know that we've put up the lightning, I guess, system now that we didn't have before. We had a system that was more of a handheld manual, if you will, system. So now we have an automated system that'll allow, you know, for sirens as well as strobe lights. So this plan then sets in motion what those hours of operation will be for both sirens and strobe lights. But I guess I'd like to still discuss now our agreement on those hours. It's proposed in here, 9:30 to 5:00, seven days a week. But I know there was discussion among some of the committee that, I mean, myself personally, I don't think those are long enough hours for a couple of specific reasons. The first is that we give use of facilities both before and after those hours. So we have people that do yoga on the beach that starts well before 8:00, 9:30 in the morning, and we also have events after 5:00, like kite night. And we do yoga on the beach, we do samples on the beach, we have walks that go on on the weekends that start way earlier than that. So I would still like to discuss, I mean, if anybody else feels that way or not. I know that these hours are set with, you know, when we have our lifeguards and our beaches open.
I agree with you, Councilwoman. Well, I think part of the problem is that if you look at the plan, to implement the plan, it requires us to have our lifeguards, our watchers. The plan has a very specific operation with regard to how things are going to occur, and the way they're going to occur is with our staff being present. And if the staff isn't present, you cannot properly implement that plan, and that's going to pose a substantial liability risk, as far as I'm concerned. I did vet this through Tom Rochelle, a risk manager at the JIF, and he agrees. He said some people, some places do maybe a half hour earlier or later, but if you look at the plan, to implement this plan, it requires our weather watchers to be present, it has our lifeguards present doing warnings, on and on. And if we don't have the staff there to implement the plan, then the plan cannot be implemented, and that's going to pose a substantial problem. So I think as far as that's concerned, it has to be the hours of operation of the beach when our staff is present to implement the plan. We can't just have lights and sirens going off, and people don't know why or what's going on because we don't have our staff there to implement the plan. I think that's the import of the necessity of the hours.
Councilwoman, sorry, could we change? That doesn't make any sense to me. That doesn't make any sense to me, only because then why even have them? If the lifeguard's the only ones going to do it, why even have the sirens and the lights? Because when they leave, that goes off. What good does it have, in my opinion? Can we change the plan? Can we change the plan and say, listen, we want to go 20, 12 hours?
This plan is through the municipal excess liability best practices, there are memos on it that we did send to Ms. Kuhn, our business administrator. I think she did distribute them to the members of council, mayor and council, and it's pursuant to those bulletin plans that are put out by our insurance carrier on how to implement the plan. So this isn't a matter of, well, let's just put it on when we think it's going to be a good idea to let people know. You have to have a plan. If you don't implement the plan, then don't have the system, is going to be the answer from an insurance standpoint. It's just like our lifeguards. If you don't want to have any risk, don't have any lifeguards on your beach, have no lifeguards ever, and everyone swims at their own risk. But that's not what the town wants to do, and most towns don't want to do. They want to have lifeguards. They want to help people. So when the lifeguards are present, then we have, you know, we have liability issues, but the lifeguards are present, and they're present for a reason. Same thing with the lightning system. In order to implement that plan of what to do, how to get people off the beach, where to direct them, where to go, where it's safe, is it 10 miles out, is it 5 miles out? You need staff to implement the plan. It's just, that's the way it is from an insurance risk standpoint.
Can I ask a question then? I don't know if it's to Karen for the system. So am I to assume then, based on that and the plan, and we're calling them these weather watchers, I guess, the backup watchers in the plan, that you need a weather watcher to actually set the siren off? I thought it was an automated system that we would program to do that.
The system is fully automated. We program the dates and the times. The weather watcher comes from the model plan and distributed through NOAA.
Karen, excuse me. What happens in September, Day of Liberty, no lifeguards, no weather watchers? The system doesn't work?
We have the strobe light. Like the strobe light?
The system doesn't work because there's no weather watchers on the beach then, and people do go on the beach in September.
At their own risk. True. Like the beach.
Correct.
So Councilman Carr, in this plan, the system's only active on Memorial Day when you get through Labor Day.
But the strobe light? Yeah, at night it doesn't?
No. No, we're going to spend money for nothing.
I guess I just want to respond, Mr. Zabarki. Yes, we saw what was said, so I don't want to say that I didn't receive all that. I did. I still don't feel like it's making any significant difference then than what we currently have in place, and yet we invested in this so that we would have a more automated system that could be used, in my opinion, for wider hours. I understand the liability piece, maybe they don't understand as well as you do, but is there a reason we can't extend those hours to at least the hours that we have use of facilities, even though there's no lifeguards there? I mean, people walk on our boardwalk, I mean, people sit on our beaches. We do kite night with kids and families until dusk.
I think, excuse my opinion.
I guess that's my biggest concern on this. So to me, those hours are inadequate for the activity that we actually support from up here in town.
My opinion, I agree with you. People right now will know what they are, and as time goes on, they'll know the same thing then when the siren goes off. When this siren, they know what the siren's all about. When this siren goes off, maybe tomorrow they won't know, but a month, two months down the road, they'll know what that means because the word will get out. Hey, you see those swamp lights? You hear that thing? There's lightning. No, no, can't find it because there's no lifeguard to tell you, you got a liability in there. If that's the liability, I want to protect Seaside Park, of course, but I want to protect the residents also. So is there a happy medium?
Well, if you look at Instagram, the public already noticed the other night in that storm, they took a picture of the sirens and the strobe and picture of the lightning flash and said, the system's not working, why is it here? And that, that...
So the word is getting out, Councilwoman. The word is getting out, Jerry.
People know they're there because we tested it. They've seen the strobe on, I believe, when we were doing the testing. I think we, you know, had seen a preliminary video of, you know, I guess, citizen education video, if you will, that'll describe what the rules of engagement are. I mean, I know it could seem offensive or maybe, you know, I don't know, it's not offensive to get a break across the street from the firehouse. So like, I'm used to sirens all the time, and I'm always grateful for them, and I have neighbors who are not grateful for them. They're like, well, everybody has an electronic device, why do I have to do it? I said, well, what about those kids who are riding their bicycles? And to me, I taught my children, you hear that, get to the side of the road. That means there's going to be emergency vehicles coming. So it's a warning system for everybody, and we invested money to do this, and I just, it's fine if this is our starting hours, but I really don't think it's adequate.
I'm full agree with you, Councilwoman.
Well, with the further discussion ahead on other issues, why don't we consider perhaps adopting the plan and then revisiting this? Some of the issues may border on executive closed matters, but more importantly, this could be looked at out of work session in the future. One of the issues, I know that the JIF is concerned about, we're appointing weather watchers, our senior lifeguards. There are weather watchers, and there's an alternate, but they're not there if this were in operation after hours. So that issue must be looked at to avoid liability. At the very least, consulting with the lifeguards involved on how best who would be assigned after hours. So there's a lot of risk there in terms of what the JIF had recommended.
I understand, and I guess I just would like to know, like, when we get the call from whoever it's going to be that's up there on kite night, and a storm rolls through and it doesn't go off, what's the response that we give? Because of the JIF, we can't turn it on?
Can I just throw something else out? I know we have the hours of 9:30 to 5:00 here, which is, lifeguards and the weather watchers who are, the officers are generally there, like 10 of 9, 5 of 9, there's people there. Because all the lifeguards are coming in to start their workout and things like that right at the 9 o'clock hour. So it at least doesn't make sense to have the hours, and somebody there, and they can do whatever they want. A lot of people are going on the beach at 9 o'clock because there's no badge checkers, et cetera, et cetera. Now, eventually we catch up with them. For badges, but a lot of people go in at 9:00. Obviously, a lot of people go in at 5:00, too, because the badge checkers come off, et cetera. So I got that. Does it make sense to at least have right now, I understand what you said there, to at least have, like, the hours from 9:00 to 5:00 right now, instead of the 9:30 to 5:00 at least? Because there are weather watchers that the officers or lifeguard officers are there. And not, I'm sorry, they're not at their, and so is their staff. They're not at their chairs, but they're all there at the headquarters, and then they go out, hence the 9:30.
I'm with the Councilwoman because I, you know, right, Joe, I mean, as I was walking to the meeting, there was about 10 to 12 people walking up to the beach, and they're going to be on the beach tonight. If the lightning goes off, nothing's going to happen because the lifeguards aren't there. Then why, why do we buy this system? And we're going to use it just 9:00 to 5:00 when the lifeguards are there? And then why do we buy the system? So we've got to work, in my opinion, we've got to work away around and see, literally you can do it 12 hours, maybe, if we can't do it for liability, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me, that's all.
So I don't know if this is a...
Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration?
Well, this is the model plan put out by NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. I sort of think they know what they're doing, but that's okay. I can only tell you my recommendation, especially from an insurance standpoint, what the insurance carriers put out. You can decide whatever you want to do. All I'll say is this, if you put in hours and you can't implement this plan, you've got a problem. Well, it's quite obvious, Councilwoman. So don't adopt this plan tonight if you're going to extend the hours because you don't have the staff to implement the plan. That's all.
Well, we could, as I guess the mayor proposed, we could start it with what's in here now, because that's what we, we know we can support, and it sounds like you feel is the best from a protection of the borough perspective. I'm okay with that. But I would like to then take it into another work session, although I thought it needed to be in a public work session and not a committee, or you could do it in the next work session when we don't have a full agenda, and look to revisit it. I'm okay with that, too, because it's better than not having them in use at all, which is what would happen if we don't have them now tonight.
We need to get it going.
Yeah.
But that is the caveat, that we need to come back to it again.
I think we need to do it with the post hours and the plan, and as we get comfortable with it, then we should revisit it.
You can always modify the plans. Not in stone, you can always modify it. Because that's the way that it can be implemented, that's all. After Labor Day, this plan's no good because there's no lifeguards. Okay. So we should have a special meeting, whatever, on the mayor, we should have a special meeting and hash this out. Because I'm not, I'm not satisfied from 9:00 to 5:00 where the lifeguards are on. I'm not satisfied. After we spent all that money putting that thing for safety, was just to look good? That's where I'm coming in at, so full agree with you, Councilwoman.
Right, thank you.
So anything else on this issue, then? There's a consensus to move ahead as proposed and have it on the next work session, the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
The next item is also on for consideration at the regular meeting, and that's a proposal submitted by RRT for renovations, for renovation of J Street Community Center, the bathroom area, and specifically, it's Resolution 224-237. It's on for consideration at the regular meeting this evening, and that had been on numerous past agendas for the work session, regular meeting with related issues, and this is the last particular piece in order to make that new community center, newly renovated community center, fully compliant with the relevant ADA regulations. And one of the estimates, as you can see, was extraordinarily high, but this one was well under the bid threshold with labor and materials of $14,200, and it references the work to be completed. Any comments, questions from council on that one?
May I review the tariff proposal? Seems like everything is included, that we need to comply, meet requirements.
Yeah, compared with Councilman Woke as well.
And the next item is a resolution, and there's a package of materials that came from Long Beach Township in particular, it's relevant, and also Ocean County had passed a resolution, we've had us for informational purposes in the past, and Seaside Park, indeed, had passed a resolution on this topic back when the issue arose. Long Beach Township has hired a number of different experts, and as well as attorneys in there, involved with several municipalities in litigation as to the various offshore wind turbine projects off of Ocean County shores off of the coast of New Jersey, and the proposed resolution is asking that those projects be revisited in terms of independent scientific review, and especially in terms of the fact that some of them started in New Jersey, for example, by an executive action without an action of the legislature or public hearings. But there's a whole host of issues you see in the resolution. It's also consistent, it comes from Mayor Mancini, Long Beach Township, and the, all the materials that are provided raise issues from a whole host of perspectives, many of which we have addressed in the past. Any questions, comments on that item? That's on for action as well.
I think it's, I think it's good as proposed. I think we've talked about this at length for many different reasons, and obviously the recent news that probably everybody has seen that's happened, where blades have now fallen upon, I think it's Nantucket. You know, and you have shards of fiberglass now floating in the ocean, and beaches closed is a live example of what potentially we'd be looking at, so fully agree with that.
The next is a discussion of a shared services agreement with Ocean County for fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2023. Today, the municipal aid road programs, and this particular is improvements to South Bayview Avenue, phases one and two, that's Resolution 224-240 for consideration at the regular meeting. And this is monies that have come to the Borough of Seaside Park, allotted by the county for intergovernmental, there's an agreement related there, too, as well. And this is $350,000?
Yeah, $350,000. Which is, we know that it matches the project cost estimate as well. So theoretically, we'd be, no money out of Seaside Park's, but for this project.
And that's on for action at the regular meeting? The next two items are directly related to what we had anticipated to be the main focus of this evening, and that would be a roundtable discussion of past events, ongoing events, proposals as to the issues associated with the Bayfront. And by rare, we're all well familiar with the unfortunate history and the issues as to the Bayfront. It's fair to say, I think, everyone stands united, the governing body, the planning board, at the committee and otherwise, to explore and implement any and all potential actions to be taken in the most expedited way possible for reasonable mitigation, solutions, plans, action plans and the like. And the one letter which, on its surface at least, it's on the agenda, it's near identical, but it gives some different reasons, it's near identical to what the DOT had responded in the past. Those of us involved over the years in terms of Bayfront issues of, I know there, a quick summary that the council's aware of, the proposal, the plans that had been implemented and received permits back at a hearing of June 23, 2017, there was a meeting, and that proposal entailed what was labeled to be an upland seawall, and that, for want of a better term, was a hardscape type of a proposal, and that was a subject matter of several public hearings with the council, and input given to the governing body at that time, it was a number of the public at that time, but obviously we were all present at that hearing, and there was some pushback to the proposal because of its nature being specifically, it was referred to in somewhat derogatory terms as the wall, but it was a hardscape proposal, and the focus of many residents went to green solutions and potential living shoreline mitigation avenues to pursue. And as such, that particular plan at that time was modified, and it led to a plan which had a hardscape component in it, but it was primarily one of the living shoreline with also some wave attenuation aspects to it, to break the power or the wave to the extent possible in terms of wave power to promote any such living shoreline. It also had the oyster reef components to it. That particular program was developed with a conjunction with input from a team of experts, and we have with us tonight, we have Pam Hiller of RVE Engineering. Also, at that time, the town had retained Dr. Stuart Farrow of the Coastal, Stockton Coastal Institute, and I had reached out to have him come here tonight or at an upcoming time, because he had indicated that he would do so, and obviously, he's a national expert, and I know he wanted to focus and probably will in the future on some of the general concerns that we all share, and that's the fact that unfortunately, the landmass of the state of New Jersey, its geology is sinking. At the same time, the whole area, the Bayfront and our state and our region are subject to the deleterious impact of sea level rise. So New Jersey unfortunately has two factors ongoing at the same time, coupled with, and that's part of the focus of the ongoing investigation, review, digesting of proposals from other areas that have been undertaken for the Bayfront Committee, the Advisory Committee, whose members are here this evening, and we thank them for all the effort, along with the entire council, past governing bodies. And included in that process, we were met with a great deal of skepticism that the town would ever receive a permit from the DEP to extend out in the water what had been labeled as the end point of the 1977 shoreline, which we were able to obtain a permission, and a permit from the DEP for that one project, that's a seven-block project at the northern portion of the Bayfront. Unfortunately, that project has never received a final permit, however, from the Army Corps of Engineers, and that entity has continued to raise issues. Some have referred to those issues as somewhat fluid, if not characterized as a moving target, but whatever the case might be, whatever the issues, the Army Corps itself has never given a final permit to that particular project, and we've had funding committed to it now twice, but that funding has been taken away because we haven't gotten that permit. At the same time, with that, that's an all-too-short history of all the many developments that have been ongoing through the work of the committee, and through citizens, through the council. Most recently, we've had a productive meeting with members of the Bayfront Committee of the council, and the Bayfront Committee, whose members are here today, and we hashed out a number of ideas, proposals, many of which had originated in the minds and thought process of the members themselves as well, as well as the governing body and the public, and that resulted in a multifaceted approach of addressing some of the many concerns from various perspectives. And one of the thoughts, one of the ideas that everyone came to some agreement on, in fact, a consensus, was to try to implement a project that would not entail the level of permitting, especially from the federal agencies, that being the Army Corps of Engineers, and rather focus on... and rather focus on things that we felt had a better chance of receiving an expedited review process of a lesser number of agencies, lesser whether they're state or federal. And part of that proposal entailed, I'm now trying to turn over the floor momentarily to those with some of the technical expertise, but part of that proposal entailed looking at the existing sheathing along the bayfront and working to buttress that and move to enhance it where necessary, combined with our request for utilization in a far more effective way than it has occurred of the DOT pump stations that are located on Seaside Park's bayfront. And as such, and as a result of that meeting, I had reached out to the DOT and those that are familiar with history, this town and at least one other area town, I believe there are more than ones, have asked for permission from the DOT repeatedly to allow tie-ins to their pump stations. We all know some issues and unanswered questions that have arisen as to those pump stations of those in Seaside Park. That's well documented in our drone footage, looking at what happens in flooding events with the recirculation of the water. And they're certainly not functioning in the way that they could in terms of effective controls, mitigation controls and the like. So that was part of this proposal, which is ongoing. And as a result, I had written the DOT even prior to that meeting and asked them, they had denied Seaside Park's request on at least two past occasions. So too, they had denied the Borough of Manaloking's request, the same request, albeit you see in the letter, they're saying that they look on these applications on what they labeled to be a case-by-case basis. So Manaloking was somewhat shocked and they had a very recent turnaround and they were given permission to tie in to the one pump station in Manaloking. And that was one of the many arguments that I had focused on in our letter. And this is the response that we've received most recently, and I turned that over, the committee has it, as does Pam Hilla of RVE. And you see that response and I know there are a number of arguments that would refute each and every point that has been raised by the DOT. And for those who are here as members of the public, I would imagine everyone knows there's a great level of expertise seated at the table, of familiarity with bayfront issues, engineering issues and experience in terms of Seaside Park and its history, loving the Borough of Seaside Park, if that's not too strong a term, and being fearful that if some of these agencies do not act on an expedited basis and help us in terms of permitting, they are jeopardizing one of the gems of the Jersey Shore and not just jeopardizing the bay, the homeowners, the infrastructure of the town, the quality of life here, property values and the like, and our safety. And that was paramount in the, this past winter, as we all know, we had four major storm events. So that being said, I'll turn the floor over, perhaps I know the Bayfront Committee is here, how this plan most recently came about, and there's a number of parts to it in terms of contributions, partnering with Ocean County, for example, and they have given preliminary very positive indications as to assistance. And I know in the Bayfront Committee itself, we called upon their expertise to get to the front of the line in terms of as-built and other materials and past work that have been done by Ocean County. And we thank, I know, members of the committee that did that and thank them for obtaining those, getting them, and our engineer has them. So with that, perhaps maybe Pam, I'll turn the floor as to that particular part of the puzzle, and obviously there's others, but that's one of them.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so thank you for having me here today. Again, my name is Pamela Hilla, I'm with Robinson Barrick Engineers. I'm a professional engineer who's very familiar with, with a lot of the bayfront issues that the borough encounters. I was involved with the original design of the bulkhead and dissipation project. I guess it's going on eight years. So unfortunately, we're not really here to talk about the past, there has been permitting issues along, along the way. We're here to really open up, open up a conversation about some conceptual plans. So at this point, a lot of what's being done is being presented in a conceptual manner to receive positive feedback from the Bayfront Committee, the mayor and council, from the public, to get, to get the feedback needed for, you know, this to move forward in a constructive way so we can approach all the regulatory agencies and, and get something permitted. That's the goal. You need to come up with a design that's permissible in order to achieve the end goal, which is to address not only some of the shoreline erosion issues, but the main, the main concern of the public is, is the flooding. Okay? So we have received feedback, and I would like to actually start off by, by quoting something that we received specifically from US Army Corps just this week on the project. It was a correspondence that we had received from US Army Corps with regards to the living shoreline that involved encroachment in the waterway, disturbance of the SAV habitat. And some of the feedback that they've given, I'm going to quote it from, from the email directly, is, please consider a bulkhead-living shoreline combination. The US Army Corps is specifically requesting that the project be modified to be a bulkhead. A bulkhead would be the least environmentally damaging alternative. You know, this is an email correspondence that was received from the US Army Corps. The DEP is involved, NOAA has copied on this email, as well as very many representatives of not only the US Army Corps, but NJDEP. Their main concerns is with the disruption of the SAV habitat that's in the waterway. So this has been a big obstacle as it relates to permitting. So I just want to, I want to share that. I want to share that with everybody and, and let you know that, that has been the biggest obstacle with moving these projects forward is whatever you propose and design, it has to fall within the constraints of the permitting requirements. If you don't, you won't be able to build it. So that, that's, you know, that's, you know, I, I've been dealing with NJDEP permitting for over 20 years. So I, there's, and it's constantly evolving, they've adapted and they've changed things. You know, within the last six years, they've, they've been working with living shorelines and trying to promote them, but it is a moving target and there's still restrictions and there's still a lot of restrictions as to how far you can go. So I do want to just, before we, I started with kind of going through the different options and some of the considerations to be discussed today, I just wanted to bring that to the table from, from a permitting perspective.
Can I ask you a question about that? So now you've got a letter that lists the SAV as the primary hindrance or concern to the Corps. If you were to put in a living shoreline and there was SAV under where you wanted to put the living shoreline, is that not problematic in and of itself?
Well, the, the adaption of the living shoreline is, one, it is, the 1977 shoreline is a huge factor, okay? The original project that, that was permitted did incorporate some breakwater within the 1977 shoreline, which offers you a little bit more flexibility. Once you extend beyond that, which a continuous dune system does, a continuous dune system into the waterway extends beyond the 1977 shoreline, and there was significant encroachment within the waterways, that, it takes it too far. It just, there's, there's not as much flexibility, but you, you are limited. Like you're going to have more limitations when you don't have a shoreline at all, when you have an existing bulkhead, you don't have any shoreline, the water is butted up against, against the existing bulkhead, you have to get creative. You have to figure out, do you want to encroach further into, into Bayview? So then you can create a breakwater between the existing bulkhead and, and, you know, a new bulkhead. Or, you know, if you're going to do something within the waterways, you have to, one, be within the 1977 shoreline, and two, you know, we have been successful, we just, we constructed a project for Berkeley Township off of Seabright Avenue, and we've, we also recently got permitted for a bulkhead and groin at the end of Butler Boulevard that encompasses a bulkhead with a hybrid living shoreline, which is riprap and submerged aquatic vegetation. Like there's a little bit of flexibility, but there's limitations to how far you can go into the water regardless. So, so you may have a different profile for different sections of the bayfront, depending on, you know, where you're placing the bulkhead relative to the water. There may, it's going to be, in my opinion, more of a hybrid solution that, you know, that's one of the, you know, one of the things that I'm hoping we accomplish today is to receive some positive feedback of, you know, what kind of breakwater, what kind of, like materials, what kind of elevations, what kind of goals is the borough looking to achieve? So we can then sit down with NJDEP for a pre-application meeting, and US Army Corps, and NJDOT, and all the regulatory agencies, and get positive constructive feedback on a plan that you want. And it will most likely have to change, you know, based off of their feedback to, to, you know, fit within the permitting requirements. But that's, that's really the first step is to, you know, get, get the feedback from the public, from, you know, all, everyone here today, and have the pre-application meeting with the, with the permitting agencies and, and see what they have to say.
Don't you think when any application meeting, you're going to have the question of, is there SAV anywhere within the range or where you want to put a living shoreline?
We do not want, yeah, we do not want to disturb SAV. Like, I mean, the, the options are to, I mean, the options are to retreat personally, that's my personal opinion, and, and not have SAV disturbance.
Everything needs to be based on fact, not innuendo, not, we believe there could be this. So what I'm trying to suggest is, isn't the first step to really understand what we have with respect to SAV all along the proposed area, to know what our limitations are, knowing that that's going to be a restriction in any permitting process we go through.
You have SAV habitat across your entire bayfront. So any, you cannot encroach beyond the 1977 shoreline, anywhere.
And how do you know that there's SAV everywhere?
Well, I've seen mapping, I mean, there's.
When was the mapping done? This is my point. We do not have current data, other than the small study we did four years, three years ago, within that five-block or eight-block region.
There is GIS mapping. I, I, I've seen it, I can share with you, but there, there is mapping that's been, there is historic mapping that demonstrates that the area, you know, SAV habitat, it's not even just the existence of, is SAV habitat, it's the potential existence of SAV habitat. I mean, the, the borough over the years has done bulkhead replacement projects. Our office helped reconstruct the pier after Hurricane Sandy. Everything had to be coded. The DEP, you know, looks at everything from J Street to 14th Ave, the improvements, you know, they look at SAV habitat as being a design parameter to what materials are being used, and, and it is something that.
Can I comment? So the, I'm going to take it up a higher level a little bit rather than SAV right now. So the, you mentioned goals, objectives and things like that for the project that you'd like to hear. So our group met with the council and what happened was we had a really bad winter. And many people in town, everybody in the hundred-year flood, has had enough to hear and they, really it's get very difficult to live in the area because of the hardship of living there with the water and everything. So that's why we have a turnout tonight. We tried to quickly have a meeting with the council, it was very, an agreement, and we did meet. And one of the main things was, is to have a project, a goal and objective, is to have a project with the least amount of permitting and more streamlined to where we can actually get a shovel in the ground and do something. So that's in, in existing right away, in existing structure that we do under operation and maintenance, and we do a replacement of that structure. And we adjust it a little bit to where, you know, there's some, you know, flexibility, we don't know what that is that we can do, but to try to reduce the amount of permitting and the timeline. That, that was an objective that we had at our meeting, that's one of the recommendations. We gave some recommendations to the mayor. And then also to take into account that we have a family resort here. So utilization of the bayfront to the maximum extent possible would be good, and having a natural bayfront that we've always had would be another goal that we'd like to have, not, you know, you step over and, or not be able to step over and then hit rocks immediately and the energy is such that you'll never have the beach, it'll always be rocks there and things like that, riprap and things like that. So, and be able to have professionals evaluate it such that there's a likelihood that the beachfront there would not change from what it is today and actually be possibly augmented in the future, be more of a beach like it was many years ago. These are simple objectives. But the main one is that we want to be able to have people get access to their home. So they live on the bay and they have boots, and then they move up to hip boots, and then they have waiters and stuff like that over time. And we want to try to address the flooding there. And we've discussed a simple way is trying to use those pump systems to our advantage. But as long as the water flows over the curb, I'll just say it's a low concrete curb, which exists in many of the areas, and there's bulkhead in other areas, which the county has installed over the years. What permits they got and how they did that, I don't know, but it's installed in some areas and other areas, it's just curb. So, so where the curb is and even where the pump stations are on 7th, water just flows right over and it just circulates, as you know, right?
Yes, I'm very well aware.
So fixing that, and one of the questions, oh, let's just tap into the pump stations, right? To me, that requires a lot of calculating. The thing was designed to do a third of the borough's Seaside Park, Ocean Avenue to Central, and try to take all that water and pump it to the bay. I don't know what the capacity is or anything like that, so that has to be done. And, and any of these stormwater studies that you have to do, that's a big time-consuming thing as well, and putting in new storm drains which are in here. So having a timeline, how long this, as you explain this, which you will be doing in a minute, how the, the timeline is with permits and things like that. We're trying to avoid a, another eight-year timeframe of here, because most of us will be dead baby, you know, in that time. Or in a wheelchair, or, except, except for children. Floating wheelchair, right? So time is of the essence type thing, you know? What can we do, and not mandated, but something significant, but to give relief to the people of Seaside Park?
So if there was an easy solution, I would love to, I would love to give it to you. I would like to say, oh, we could simply do this, and it would work. But, but the reality of the problem is, in order to stop tidal flooding along the bayfront, you have to create a continuous barrier to stop the water from coming into the bayfront. You have very low-lying roads that are lower than the tides, okay?
And yards.
And the yards, and there's garage floors that flood and, and, but the reality, this is, the reality of the problem is, you want to, you want to establish a continuous barrier between the bay and the road, okay? And you're going to need an avenue to get the rainwater and stormwater out of the road when it rains, because you're going to hold, you need to hold back the bay on one side and you need to push out the stormwater on the other side.
And the pump has to be significant enough to be able to handle that. And, you know, one of, you asked for input, so in your plans, you have it where you remove the existing stormwater system and you rely solely on the, a new system that's plumb through. through the lift stations.
That's the initial conceptual plan, so that-
And my comment to that is, we're putting all our eggs in one basket there, and if we have a problem with the pump stations, which I see him working on those things all the time, and they take the generators away, you know, June to September, August, September, that's hurricane season itself, so, so we don't have a perfect system there with the pumps.
Yeah, and I would like to-
Having a backup, I think, would have a, be a better idea.
I would like to, I would like to touch on that, 'cause I, and I, I even have, I mean, I've highlighted specific correspondence received by the DOT as well, okay? So, there is, I would, I would say, a very huge obstacle is the DOT pump stations, okay? Is there, is there going to be an opportunity for shared service between the county, the borough, and NJDOT? Currently, the DOT pump stations do have a connection of the county, there is a county inlet that is tied into the DOT pump stations. The DOT specifically says, as currently constructed, the pump stations are not designed to handle the influx of additional stormwater or tidal overflow that would result from the connection of local drainage systems. It is something that they put in writing, we've discussed it with them before, okay? But my, my, my point to that is, you know, we have opportunities, there are opportunities, if, if it's the influx of stormwater that the DOT is going to stop the borough from, from connecting, we can attenuate some of the stormwater runoff to help reduce the influx, and also demonstrate to them, and I, and I strongly, I'm, I'm a very strong advocate of this, because I have drone video of, of these pump stations in a complete state of failure under multiple storm events because of the flood inundation. These pump stations take on an infinite amount of water. It's not like, so the fact that they're saying they can't take off runoff from a street, but they can take on the bay, that's not, it doesn't make any sense to me. So, I think part of the argument is showing DOT that, one, you know, we are going to make these pump stations better, we are going to protect the pump stations with their support from tidal flooding, so, one, they work more efficiently, and, two, it may be, the borough may have to do some attenuation, which means some temporary storage of the runoff underground in larger pipes, as well as water quality management. You may need to treat the water. Mind you, it is also a county road, okay? So, there's opportunities for shared services between the borough and the county, but in no means is this like, an immediate, like, this is gonna happen overnight. This is, the first step is to meet with the DOT and talk about options and explain, and, like, they, they have to be on board, and, and the reality is, the two pump stations at Island and-
Eight, seven.
And, nine, eight, seven. They flood more than any other DOT pump station that is constructed. So, they, they flood, so that, that being said, they are the least efficient pump stations. There's pump records that can be OPRUD, that are going to show that those pump stations require the most cost in maintenance, and by us connecting and creating this barrier, we would actually help improve the pump stations, work more effectively, which is for the better of the general public, for not only the state, for Route 35, for borough, but also for the county. So, I, I think that it's an argument that is worth pursuing. Or, the alternative is, does the borough and the county potentially want to construct and own and operate their own pump stations?
No, I doubt that.
So, how are you gonna pump the water out?
The second part is, well, rather than underground piping to the system, having just a street flow to it, rather than having the underground piping system, that, that's one. The other is, by removing the storm drains, we remove those groynes that we have all there that's holding the beach together, in my opinion. That, that's actually holding the sand, and it's a structure out there going out, offshore, and that has a valuable resource, I think, to, to maintain those.
And I do agree, I mean, storm-
They would build up more, they would actually do more protection for us, as, as having that groin every street. And then that we have those, our recommendation was to maintain those and have an automatic gate valve system there, so we can turn them on, turn them off, and then manage it, hate to say it, like the, the lightning system, you know, you have to have a plan, and you have to have competent people managing it, and you have to have an effort there, and it costs some money. But, you would have some type of system, because if those pumps go down, if we connect everything to two, one pump or two pumps, if the one pump will handle the southern, the other pump will handle the north of the Yonk. If, if one of those goes down, we, we may be having a catastrophic problem, because the gravity ain't gonna work anymore.
No, and I-
But those are comments I had, I just, I don't wanna stop you from presenting.
I agree, yeah, I, I agree that, that there needs to be a relief, and, you know, having, you know, I, I'm not sure if, if you feel that the actuated valves should be the prime solution, or the backup solution to the pours?
It all works together, yeah.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure that's clear, because I feel-
And one might be prime one day, and then it might be the secondary another time.
That the actuated valves alone to support the outfalls, you would still have, you know-
It's a, it's a system with redundancy and backups.
It's a system more with redundancy and backups.
And, yes, that's, that's a concept.
But it's also a, a concept that would allow you to do it stepwise, in a timely manner. What Chuck is talking about can reduce the so-called nuisance flood, as you described in your original presentation eight years ago, significantly. And that nuisance flood, as your statistics said, about sixty-five to seventy percent of the flooding at that time was nuisance.
It's chronic flooding.
Right.
I think I've said it many times, it's, it's chronic flooding.
Chronic flooding that's not storm-related. That's what you described it, okay? If you approach this in a stepwise manner, dealing, as Chuck pointed out, with actuated valves, better outfall system to control the, I'll use the word nuisance, but you've got a different word, flood, and then deal with an intelligent, overall solution to mitigate the hundred-year flood, everything can be built upon one another, nothing is being put in that can't be of value in the long term, and it addresses sixty to seventy percent of the problem in a much more expeditious and timely manner to relieve the headaches that these hundreds of old people, and myself, and this whole committee are feeling regularly.
So, Pam, I only have two, two things to say, and then I'd like you to present what you have to present. Number one is for the audience to know, but can you hear us?
Not well.
Not well, it's always a problem.
Excuse me, but exactly who was sitting at the table? We've only had one person to introduce himself.
Oh, should we?
Yes.
Should we pass a mic around?
We should introduce her there.
Both of these mics are loud. Is this working? Okay.
And where's your background?
All right, all right, so, where, do you live at Seaside Park?
Yes.
Okay, where are your neighbors?
Do you want the mic? Shall we pass it?
No, I think it's picking up right here.
And what can you introduce yourself from your background?
Sure. So, this is our bayfront committee, it started up a few years ago by the mayor, we basically assist the mayor direct-
Chuck.
We assist the mayor directly with recommendations. I'm the chairman, my name is Chuck Appleby, I'm at 215 Tenth Avenue, I'm one house up from the bay. I'm a, I work for the DOD, Department of Defense, I'm an environmental protection specialist. I have a degree in natural, in coastal marine resource management from Stockton. I've lived here my whole life, I'm very familiar, I live two houses away from where I live now. So, very familiar with the area, and the mayor picked me to chair this, and then we picked out certain individuals, so, Frank, you're on.
Frank Gibbons, I live on the corner of First and Bayview, I'm a mechanical engineer by profession.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Holloyd, 200 North Bayview, pretty much lifelong resident here in Seaside Park, civil engineer, and much experience with Ocean County and many other engineering companies around.
Great, thank you. Sure.
I'm Sherry Valano, I live at 110 South Bayview Avenue, and I've been working on this, trying to mitigate this problem with the flooding since, I don't know, 2005, maybe you were here with all the state and the county and federal, that we kinda shared our thoughts, and you may all have just received a letter from me, and I thank you for all your email that you sent to me, because I circulated this to all of our committee members, and also to the council. And all I have to say is, we have been working with engineering companies for years, and a lot of engineers, and I just wanna tell everybody here, and I know my committee, but we need to address this situation, and we need to do it right away. And whatever hiccups there are, let's get all these agencies that we wanna partner with, get them on, at, at their table, and let's do a roundtable discussion. Submit the plan. Whatever the hiccup is, maybe you can talk to them, and, and they can approve something, or maybe they have an alternate. I think we need to do it right away, because all of us, I live on the bay, I do not like parking two blocks away, and I do not like the water under my houses, all of you are experiencing, so it's now a crisis. And I know all of the people along the bayfront with all their emails, they're fed up, so, Pam, it's in your hands, so what can you do to expedite this and overcome these hurdles? By getting these DOT together, Army Corps together, sit down, iron it out, and that's what we're doing.
Introduction. A realtor in town for many years.
Oh, yes, I'm also a realtor.
So, that, that, that artis is your prime.
Mitch? Mitch Koppelman, I live at Tenth Avenue, two houses off the bay, I've been there twenty, thirty years. Last two years, I've also been a resident of Sanibel, Florida, dealing with quite similar issues, especially post-hurricaneian. I have a PhD in marine geochemistry, so I'm somewhat familiar, not so much, with engineering aspects, but with the coastal environment, the water chemistry, and all the interactions thereof. I think that's probably what you need.
Joe?
Yeah, my name's Joe Schaefer, I live on Second Avenue, not, but on the Beach Park, so. I'm retired as a senior vice president of Northeast Remco Caldwell Marine, and we built the Garden State Parkway from exit ninety-eight to ninety-one, the Bass River Bridge, and a lot of flood control projects, so I'm the guy that's probably most familiar with the constructibility of, of these kind of systems.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Pam, why don't you-
So, I, I would like to continue. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, I think that, I mean, all right, Chuck, I feel like there's been very good, you know, contributions that, you know, maybe a phased approach is something, you know, that would, would benefit the situation. So, so the, the project, you know, there was two options that were originally presented that I'm going to be discussing today. Both of them involve doing a bulkhead along the bayfront, both of them involve reducing the outfalls, eliminate the, the open water that allows the bay to come back and, and flood the roadway, and, and both of them have, you know, definite obstacles that the borough would have to get through as it relates to degrading, the elevations, regrading the, the bayfront, as well as, you know, providing adequate public access. So, I do wanna just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through just two of the options, you know, and from a permitting perspective, I feel like, that is another thing, option one, I feel like from a permitting perspective would be easier, would still require the permits, but it would be easier, but it would be more invasive as it relates to Bayview Avenue. Option two, you know, would be, you know, to try to eliminate, reducing, you know, the width of Bayview Avenue, which I feel from a permitting perspective would, would definitely take more time, and, you know, there would be concerns with the disruption of the existing vegetation that, you know, would, would have to be discussed and, and vetted out further. So, just in summary, I do wanna briefly talk, talk to the borough with regards to elevations. You know, when I'm, when I'm talking about elevations, it's relative to the sea level. So, you know, I'm, I'm gonna talk about elevation five, I'm gonna talk about the road elevation, the existing road elevation of Bayview Avenue fluctuates from one point five feet above sea level to about three feet above sea level, okay? There is constant tidal flooding, because the tides do exceed elevation of three feet frequently throughout the year, as you are all aware. As it relates to the FEMA flood maps, just, just for a little bit of a background, currently the borough is monitored under what's called the effective flood maps, but the effective flood maps are being restudied, okay? So, the current effective flood maps don't necessarily really reflect what occurred during Sandy, or what currently occurs. There were, I think, some errors in those, the development of those maps, where they didn't model all the storm events that, you know, occurred during Sandy, so, so they are currently reevaluating the FEMA maps. The preliminary maps that have not been adopted show a flood elevation of about nine feet, pretty much, along the bayfront, which is higher than what happened during Hurricane Sandy, to be honest, okay? So, but, but there are what's considered coastal A zones, which encounter wave action, especially J Street to Island has significant wave action because of the large fetch in that, in that area, as well as, you know, the other areas along the bayfront. I mean, wave action is, is certainly an impact, it's not just the flooding, the rising of the tide, it's, it's the force, it's the, it's the wave action that continues to erode and, and damage not only the shoreline, but the infrastructure within Bay, Bayview Avenue. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a summary. So, as far as, and as I'm saying, this is conceptual in, in nature, based off of some of the feedback that we've received from, from mayor and council, and some of the correspondence we've, we've received, as it relates to your meetings, you know, with mayor and council. So, the proposed, the proposed plan would to be, what to, to address, to create a continuous barrier that would extend from J Street, from the Marina, all the way to Fourteenth Avenue, which is the border between Seaside Park and, and Berkeley Township.
Just a question for context, because it'll help as you go through this, what about the other streets? How will this impact? Because, for example, I'm on Oak Street and the Lagoon, and we can't even get out to, like, walk our dogs, so flooded, so this doesn't extend to N and P where there's man-made, you know, Looms?
Yeah, but, I apologize to you, ma'am, we'll, we'll take that one comment, but we're under the restrictions of the Open Public Meetings Act, so we really have to have people's names, addresses, and open it up for comment, so-
Oh, sorry.
With that one provided, Pam, if you wanna take a stab at anyone on the panel, I think it surprises to say that the governing body is very, very aware of that particular area that you're referring to and the issues associated with it.
I mean, I don't know, I, I know that the mayor, mayor and council have, you know, a plan to work on an overall mitigation plan for the entire borough. You know, at this time, the conceptual, as, as developed at this point in time, is, is for the extension, the limits are from J Street to, to Fourteenth Ave.
Bayview Avenue.
Along Bayview Avenue.
Along, yeah.
Okay, that is what we're talking about this evening. So, it would be composite shooting spanning from Fourteenth to I Street. The option one would be constructed physically within Bayview Avenue, so it would not, it would not disturb vegetation, it would be within an impervious area.
How many feet in with that?
So, that is currently the cross-section, we have it shown at, we're showing it three feet within, within Bayview Avenue, but that is something that would have to develop further based off of, if there was, with regards to breakwater needs and existing utilities. So, this is, this is conceptual in nature, but we would need to verify existing gas main locations, existing utility locations in certain areas that may impact.
And there's also a ramp system for walking, you have some ramps along Bayview, so that comes out an extra few more feet.
Exactly.
And then we wanna have enough space to where people can walk past that and around, because they, they- because the promenade is along the河.
Yes.
That's another.
At previous meetings, there have been people from the public that have come up and said, we don't even understand the term sheathing. Can you tell them what it would look like?
So it's a corrugated bulkhead sheathing. So it's, it would be, you know, there's different materials that would be considered, whether it be steel or a composite material that, you know, would be resistant to corrosion. But it's basically a core. It's similar to the bulkhead that's out there now. But it would be at a higher elevation and it would be further within the roadway. But as Chuck mentioned, placing it in the roadway, you're looking at redesigning Bayview Avenue. You're going to make your shoulders narrower and potentially your travel lanes narrower. Right now, Bayview Avenue is a very wide road and the travel lanes are very wide. There would have to be approval and consideration and review with the county engineering department with regards to how the, you know, how narrow the shoulder and the lanes could appear.
It may have up to the reduced speed at the end.
It could be a reduced speed, you know, and as you said, it could potentially reduce between a pedestrian and bike, you know, bike paths. You'd probably, you'd wind up having reduced shoulders, which is...
Our objective would be to incorporate all that in the plan.
Yes, and it's my understanding, the borough's been purged, that they tried having a meeting with the county this week. I believe the assistant county engineer was away. So it looks like there's tentative, maybe something scheduled for next week. But the county's involved and is aware of the project and is going to be very involved with any alterations to Bayview as it relates to widths, travel lanes, and any modifications as needed.
But in your opinion, there's a lot of room to deal with.
I find Bayview to be a very wide road. And when nobody's on it and you're driving, you know, I, it's nice.
Yeah, but you can't have, you can't have the cake and eat it too, Al. You want to fix the problem, you gotta do something.
All right. We got it now.
Otherwise, we don't do anything.
We got it.
It's really, that's why, that's why, yes. So this is option one, so we're gonna keep going. As far as the proposed height of the wall, at this point, we're looking at an elevation of five feet. So that would be approximately anywhere from two to three feet above the existing grade of the roadway. So it would be elevated approximately two to three feet above the existing grade of the roadway.
Pam, question? The height at which you have to start having railings on everything? Is that something that's set in code to where if it's less than 36 inches, you wouldn't have to do the railing? So we haven't solidified an actual height.
Correct, nothing is solidified as far as height.
But we want to make sure that we have the height to where it adequately, like Mitch said, the percentage of flood events it addresses, but yet it doesn't hinder any visual things, or you want to try to keep that open. And being able to reduce the railings, if possible, by code, I think that would be a preference. Do the walkways show a railing go up?
Walkway, okay.
The accessways, the public accessways, I mean, that would have to be discussed further. But once you see a certain height, handrails are required. And they may be, it may be something that the borough wants.
It's a code, we have to add that, and insurance.
Code and insurance. However, the elevation relative to the road compared to the elevation on the water road side, there's going to be a difference.
Right.
So I don't, that would be, has it addressed?
It might be higher.
So you may need handrails regardless, based off of the height of the landing relative to the water side.
All right, something to address.
But it is something that we would look at.
Pam, at this point, how do we land at five feet?
So...
The question is, how do we get to five feet as the elevation? Like I was trying to say, we want to be able to address a majority of the flood events, but you can't address them all. So we want to have that percentage. So maybe I'll study that.
I would like to, I would like to touch on that. So the five-year is not, the five-year, the flood elevation of five feet is not actually the hundred-year storm event. Depending, based off of preliminary mapping that has not been formally adopted by FEMA, that is still being studied and is anticipated to be adopted within the next couple of years. We have looked at, we've evaluated different flooding conditions. There are, there were several bulkheads that were installed and replaced within the municipality that are set at an elevation of five feet. The 14th Ave bulkhead is at an elevation of five feet, as well as some of the other bulkheads that were replaced. I believe at the end of N and O Street, or maybe it was just, and then there was, I think off of Lake also. So that is something that is, I feel, one of the biggest obstacles. So when you're looking at the project, you're looking at the longevity of the project. This is going to last you 150 years. Your anticipated sea level rise, you're anticipating, you know, continued large storm events that you want to get as much protection from as possible. You know, and there are, there are a significant amount of length of bulkhead within the municipality that are set at five feet. It is, it has been more of a standard, especially after Hurricane Sandy, when you're constructing bulkheads. A lot of towns have developed ordinance is where they want them to be a minimum of five feet, potentially six feet, depending on where you are. It is a, you know, you're looking at protection, you know, up to the, up to the 50-year storm event versus the 100-year storm event. But there, it offers more protection. And that's one of the reasons that we are recommending it. It is consistent with the elevation of the bulkhead that was proposed for the reduced section of a project, which extended from J Street to Island Ave. And it is a controversial issue and it is actually one of the probably strongest. It's going to make the grading to the existing infrastructure, it's going to be challenging. Like there's going to be some coordination, but elevation five feet is, I think, an appropriate elevation for the bayfront.
So I think, we've only had this a few days, like everybody, we haven't met with this yet. So one of the things that I'd like our committee to look at is that five foot and come up with a review on that. So we'll move forward on that, but that's one of the things.
And I agree, and I think that is one of the most important parts of this design that will require feedback, you know, as far as the level of protection and the elevation. And because that impacts the grading of the 14th Ave pier and boat ramp, you have your 15th Ave pier and playground, your fifth Ave, I'm sorry, fifth Ave pier and playground, the yacht club, as well as the Marina. So the grading and tying everything in. So, I mean, one other thing to keep in consideration. And I'm not sure if even this reduced side, I can get you blown up elevations. But we have detailed topography at 14th Avenue. So the terminus of the bulkhead and potential for flanking is a concern.
Yes.
You know, at both ends. So the terminus of both ends and the elevation, how we're going to tie everything in, 35 is an elevation of five. It's not. So Central Ave is, I believe it's around three feet.
So we can move on from that. We're going to be looking at the elevation a little bit more to come up with something that's reasonable.
And I'm hoping what you were emailed, you can see, I mean, the topo is on there. We tried to import as much topo as we can, so you would physically see it. But if you need more data, please let me know. And as well as...
Pam, I did reach into my dictionary. I came up with the word panacea. So this is, this is not going to be the fixing flooding in Seaside Park. I want to make sure everybody is aware of that, that this is not the be all and the all of fixing flooding. We're looking at mitigating certain flood events.
Mitigating certain flood events. Yes, and that's part of the goal. Like what, to what level of protection are you looking for? And then as far as breakwater, it would be recommended facing the bulkhead that there would be some type of armoring, whether it be a riprap or alternative breakwater be proposed to help dissipate some of the wave action, reduce some splash action. And I did even attach some photographs just for some type of visual. We're going to just open up a dialogue.
Maybe want to emphasize, the riprap is there to protect both the sheathing and the road, but it isn't what you will see. It will be covered with a living shoreline.
Well, that would be...
At the waterline.
What is riprap? Can you define it?
Well, at the waterline.
So riprap is large, it's large stone that stabilizes and dissipates the wave action. So, and then there would be opportunity to vegetate, to offer vegetation.
Is this an accurate photo? I didn't think you wanted to send this one out yourself, but...
I want, I want people to have a visual of, I mean, that is, that is, it is a measure used to dissipate wave action, you know, whether, whether there's vegetation, I mean...
And at the waterline, it transitions to a sand.
I can tell you, this is, this concept is what was used in Sanibel for all the roadways that were destroyed by Hurricane Ian. But it is all covered in either vegetation or a living shoreline. So I watched it being put in, and it looks just like that. And then when it was finished, you don't even know it's there.
Yeah, because you're going to, you're looking to build up vegetation. The area where you already have vegetation, the goal is, you want the vegetation to cover the riprap. But you don't have vegetation everywhere. So you're not going to have vegetation where you don't currently have vegetation. You can attempt to plant vegetation, but there are certain areas along the bayfront where it will be challenging to establish vegetation, depending on how far into Bayview you go.
And that's another problem.
And that's another problem. It depends, I mean, if you, you know, the further you go into Bayview and you create your riprap, you can, you have more room for vegetation. But it'd be very difficult to establish vegetation in front of the bulkheads that you currently have. Because, I mean, you can't establish vegetation because there's so much wave action. It just won't sustain itself.
Yeah, I mean, this is going to prevent the scour, too. If you don't have any armor here, and the water hits it, it just washes everything out.
It's going to help protect the vegetation that's already there as well. It's to serve protection against overspray. It's to serve protection against the bulkhead and also to help protect the vegetation that would be in front of it. So it's to serve multiple purposes.
Would you also agree that in a conceptual manner, that if you did this, even in areas where there's no vegetation today, and if you attempted to put it in, alas, at some point, you could, if there are new engineering concepts to reducing wave action further out on the state allows it, you could dissipate more wave action further out to allow vegetation to grow, if and when the technology is available and approved by the state?
But, and the fact that you could probably create more uplands vegetation. So like if you have, if you have riprap into the water and the higher, you know, depending on, depending on how high your wall is and how high your riprap is, if you have an uplands riprap, you may be able to establish more vegetation on the higher end, potentially, if it has time to establish. But yeah, you would need some type of significant breakwater, you know, to establish mitigation in the water where you have an existing bulkhead.
So this is the phased approach, that's where we're going. So, you know, we're trying to look at this hardscape as a mitigation right here.
All right, so let's continue. So for purposes of right now, we anticipate approximately a six-foot wide riprap. You know, and that would, things would have to be vetted further. The stone had to be sized. We'd have to evaluate the existing real estate and from a permitting perspective, how much room you have. But we'd anticipate approximately a six-foot riprap barrier in front of the existing, the proposed bulkhead. And then there would be a, as you had said, there would be plantings within the riprap to help basically establish a dune, you know, and have it be a hybrid vegetated riprap system. Public access points would be located, and this is, as I said, it's conceptual. Potentially, public access points would be located at every other street end. But the locations would have to be confirmed more with the borough with regards to, you know, even the materials, whether it be ramps, whether it be steps, handrails was a good point. You know, one of the concerns on the water road side is if you have decking or boarding and it encumbers wave action, you know, you may have significant damage in repair and maintenance versus an alternative material.
Is there the ADA accommodation requirement when we do something like this?
So as of right now, you guys have certain ADA access points. The borough has an existing municipal public access plan that's been adopted by the state, and it was required as a condition of your dune maintenance permit. So it covers your public access on the ocean front as well as your bayfront. So I believe currently, the only two ADA accessible routes would be your Fifth Avenue pier and your 14th Ave. So currently, in your municipal public access plan, you have two ADA compliant locations on the bayfront. I would say at minimum, you have to maintain what's in your current municipal public access plan. But there would be room to, you know, look at alternative locations if the borough felt there was a need. All right, so conceptual cross-sections, we have provided a couple of different options. Option, option A kind of shows some options for potential stairs. Option one, I meant as, you know, potential for stairs. Maybe some type of system that can be bulkheaded that is, you know, not decking. But however, this is something that just really needs consideration and thought and some feedback on, you know, what type of accessways and, you know, what you would like to see along the bayfront. We did talk about ADA already. So we are looking at maintaining ADA at the Fifth Avenue Park area, as well as 14th, which is not noted in here, but should be. Option two is a very similar design as it relates to the physical components. It's a bulkhead, it's public access ways, but the bulkhead would be closer to the water. From a permitting perspective, I do feel that this would be more of a challenge as it relates to the existing vegetated areas. And, you know, there are some mapped wetlands. So it would require feedback from the DEP with regards to see if this is even a potential option. But it would be, you know, look to put the bulkhead further, you know, either at the curb line, so that way you're not reducing the width of Bayview Avenue and looking to replace the existing bulkhead in the same location, which would be a replacement. You are limited with regards to elevation if you're replacing in kind. I believe you can't, I think you have a two-foot limitation as far as up to two feet. And it may, I do have to verify that. But if you're going to replace existing bulkhead in kind at the same location, it would be a different permit. All right, I will verify replacement in kind.
And that would be acceptable across the length. So, you know, the whole Bayview Avenue, whatever the height, the max height is right now at the bulkhead, whether we can extend that to be what everything is and then go two feet above that. That was my goal, to try to have it in the maintenance and repair or replacement realm, to reduce permitting costs.
So yeah, replacing the bulkhead in kind at the same location, the obstacle there is the real estate in front. How much real estate you have in front to do some type of breakwater or combo living shoreline, that would be an opportunity. You know, we would, like I said, it would need to be discussed further with the DEP as far as the limitations. So as far as both option two, from a permitting perspective, so you'd have about 2,000 millimeter feet of the wall that would be kind of... 2,000 millimeter feet of the wall that would be kind of, that would have potential issues with regards to the coastal wetlands, that would need the DEP's review and approval. It would have the same grading constraints as far as Fourteenth Ave. boat ramp, the Fifth Ave. and playground, the Seaside Park Yacht Club and the Marina. There is some significant grading obstacles that would need to be really looked at and vetted out and designed, so they could function as they currently function. As far as this option, also would consider a riprap stone for the breakwater, that would have, could potentially have more limitations because it's, because if it's location at the mean high waterline versus if you propose the wall, you know, behind the existing bulkhead. Sizing would have to be verified down the road.
You raised one point that I hadn't thought of. Are you saying that if you bring it landward, meaning into the road, you can or cannot take out the existing bulkhead?
Would you leave it?
You can. I personally would leave it, because I think it would act as a breakwater, but you could modify it to, you know, you could bury it with riprap. Like, I don't see why you would remove it, personally. I think it would provide a structural support for a-
Catch drop it in.
Yeah. Yeah, a durable riprap, yeah, I think, I think it serves a purpose, and would help stabilize the riprap. Same thing, there would be sort of a hybrid, a bulkhead with like a hybrid riprap planting, dune planting proposed to help visually, you know, minimize the impact of the riprap, and then public access points, same thing would have to be discussed. I think option two shows ramps versus stairs, an option, you know, for ramp crossover, you might want to have a hybrid, depending on what is the use and who is going to be using the public access points, what are you trying to accomplish, what you need out of them, you know, is ramps necessary versus stairs?
If you're wheeling up a kayak or something.
But in reality, it is the same, whichever proposal, whatever the borough feels, the residents feel is the appropriate need for access, it's applicable to either.
It's applicable to either, but the limits are like, the public accessway, you know, from a permitting perspective, you kind of have, you have to present the DEP what you want, because that's an area of disturbance. You have to show them, like, stairs will not disturb as much as a ramp. So, if you want a ramp, you ask for the ramps, you get approved for that disturbance area, that's all tied into your permit. So, you have to know, you know, you have to know what you're submitting to the DEP, because they care at this, you know, from a permitting perspective. As far as stormwater conveyance, we did talk about this, and I'm going to, I'm going to note, as far as from a redundancy perspective, I felt like Chuck had a very good point with regards to maintaining, like, replacement of existing outfalls in kind, and considering an actuated valve system as a redundancy factor, you know, there's, there's obviously a maintenance component to anything you do, especially in this environment, but it is something that, you know, I think the outfalls themselves, they do act disturbance, you know, you see that all over the coast, and it's, there is benefit to that, so.
And Rob made a good point at our last meeting, the maintenance of these systems is not possible in many of them, because they're collapsed and they're beyond the ability to maintain them in many cases.
Yeah, they're-
So, it's not like you could just go clean them out, but some of them don't function at all.
Excuse me, Chuck, someone talked into the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, we discussed the existing systems that are there, the stormwater systems at the end of every street. Many of them don't function as originally designed, some are collapsed and can't be repaired or made, put back into functioning as originally designed, so, you know, there's nothing we can do immediately about those, they have to be replaced. So, this is, this project that we thought of would be replacing those and having it based on new designs, be able, you know, be better preserved for ice damage and things like that in the design.
Yeah, so you have a piling system, there was a strap appropriately, and you would, you would be able to get a different permit if you're not modifying the outfalls, so one of the reasons why with, from the last designs, we needed to get an IP permit, because we were extending the outfalls because of the dune system. A replacement of the outfall in the same location requires a different permit, which is a general permit, which is quicker to obtain.
That's what, so our letter, our recommendation was to try to do as many, move everything in general permits as much as possible to reduce having to go for long-term permit applications, which could, you know, middle 90 days.
Mm-hmm. As far as stormwater conveyance, because this is a big component of the flood mitigation part of the project, okay, so the goal would be to disconnect or isolate the bay from the existing drainage system and redirect the stormwater to the DOT pump stations in both directions, at both pump station locations, and allow those pump stations to physically pump the stormwater, because you're mitigating the bay water tidal influence, it's to pump the stormwater that enters into the system out of the island through the existing pump stations, which do drain Central Avenue currently. There's a significant amount of impact to these DOT pump stations that is a result of the tidal influence that occurs there on a regular basis, and I do feel that any approach with the DOT is going to require some accommodation for attenuation to help reduce the runoff to the DOT pump stations, and also water quality. So, the system is designed to meet certain water quality treatment to allow it to operate from a permitting perspective, even though I strongly feel the DOT pump stations do not operate as permitted or as intended, a permit is a permit, okay? So, we still have to, on paper, demonstrate that we are not negatively impacting the total runoff or, you know, reducing the water quality issues going to the pump station. So, it is something that I feel, you know, once we kind of get additional feedback tonight and direction from the borough, I think within the next week, it's my strong opinion to just push formating with DOT as soon as possible to really vet out these issues, but I do think that connection to the two DOT pump stations is the best option for the borough. I always have felt that way, I think everybody here has felt that way. I just think we have to offer them more, like, we have to offer them more, and this is a county road as well, so the county wants this project to move forward as well, so the county will be responsible for their fair share of the project as it relates to the runoff from the county roadway, as well as the water quality impacts from the county roadway, so I think that that is also something to take into consideration.
A question I have for you is, if we reconstruct or we put back this existing storm systems at every street to their original design, based on the stormwater regs, are we required to have manufactured treatment devices installed upon those, or would this just be a direct replacement? Would they make us upgrade them to current standards?
Well, you're looking at, you're over an acre of disturbance, you're looking at, you're going to have to address water quality issues, so I would say, one, it's my understanding that the DOT pump stations, they had to maintain a certain percent of total suspended solid removal. I don't know exactly, I don't know if it was 80% or 50%, because it was considered a redevelopment project. Once you exceed one acre of disturbance, you have to address water quality from, to some capacity, whether the underground water quality devices, there may be some alternative solutions that we could vet out.
That adds a lot of cost and more disturbance by your storm, and maintenance for the town afterwards.
I agree. No, I agree, but-
I want to explain to everybody what we're talking about, I think, I see a lot of blank faces.
So, right now you have a storm catch basin at the end of the street, it's a hard pipe goes right up to the bay. So, new stormwater regs many years ago still, they're not that new, but you have to put a device in the ground, it's a big tank, and it basically takes the sediment out, so you're not dumping that directly out, and it's, the water spins around, you can get floatables out of there, petroleum too supposedly, different things. So, whether we'd have to do that, that was a significant increase in cost. When we put the original ones in that are there now, way back when, I believe we squeezed it in right before a bunch of rules came out at that time in those years way back then.
Your grandfather then?
No, well, I don't know, that's what we have to find out.
If it's a replacement or maintenance, it covers, it goes under different requirements, but I know that the DOT pump stations currently have manufactured treatment devices at all their locations. So, that plays into the role of us sending more water there, those devices are designed-
Okay.
They aren't designed to take on the bay, even though they do, but on paper, like, there's still the permitting component that has to be addressed. So, you know, there are different measures, there's different options, but I feel like a storage component and a water quality component is going to be necessary for DOT to even consider-
Okay.
-the borough and the county connecting, and that is my professional opinion there.
Yeah.
As far as the tie-ins, so, these are going to be the obstacles, and these may be the driving points to, you know, what the elevation is that you are going to want to move forward with, but you're looking at the Seaside Park Yacht Club, the Fifth Avenue Bay Pier, and maintaining ADX, ideal accessibility, and the Fourteenth Ave. and Boat Ramp. I feel like I'm a little redundant, I apologize for that, I'm trying to work through this, and then obviously the Marina, and I do want to point out that, you know, the existing grades at the end of both ends, you know, they're, you know, they range, you know, between three and four feet, you know, they are not, your existing grades are not at five feet. So, there is, there is that-
So, is that the Marina bulkhead you're talking about? Is not at five feet?
The Marina bulkhead currently is not at five feet, I believe it's closer to four. So, we have grades from, we have done that shoreline stabilization with articulated matting, so the groin and bulkhead, the groin is at five feet, but the existing bulkhead, it looks like it's at like 3.5. It varies.
That's a weak link in the whole.
But it does appear that, I mean, the bulkhead looks like, I would imagine there is going to be a plan to replace that bulkhead as well, so it may be a subsequent phase to this. The bulkhead is not new, so that is also something to take into consideration, that, you know, there's room for improvement at that location. So, as far as regulatory agency goes, you're looking at a CAFRA permit regardless of where the wall is, okay? Waterfront development permit, any modifications to the outfall is going to require a waterfront development permit as well as any encroachment in the wall. If you put the wall where it is, where the existing wall is, it's still going to require a waterfront development permit. Any thing that is within the mean high waterline or touches the mean high waterline will require And then as far as the United, the US Army Corps permit, obviously will be required as far as the DOT permit, that will be required for the proposed drainage modifications, Ocean County permit, they're going to need to review any modifications to Bayview Avenue and the drainage system as well as Ocean County soils, and I think that, I feel like I've talked enough.
Yes.
And I apologize if I talk too much.
Mayor, if you could address that just momentarily, I think there was a consensus about a meeting with the council and the committee previously, that we were hoping to avoid the necessity to apply to the Army Corps of Engineers because of the delays that they've imposed on us on the other project.
I understand, but I don't, that's not, I don't see that being possible. If you're making any modifications to the outfalls, it falls within the waterway and that's under the jurisdiction, it's just depending on the disturbance level, it impacts the type of permit that you need.
Is that tying into the pump stations as the trigger for that, or is that?
So, yes, I mean-
What's the trigger of modification of the outfall, that's the DOT ones, right, the pump station?
Well, it would be, I mean, the DOT pump stations themselves, the goal would be to construct a new bulkhead waterward of the pump stations, so it would require CAFRA and US-
We're talking about the core, the veneer process.
So, Army Corps, if you are replacing outfalls-
Right.
-it would require a US Army Corps permit, because you're physically in the water. If you're replacing the existing outfalls, you need a waterfront development permit and US Army Corps permit, so, because you're physically in the water.
But you're replacing it, so it's still necessary for a permit?
They just, they want to know what's going on.
It should be, that should be.
It's not a heavy-
It's not, it's not a new modification.
Just refresh my memory, when we had the original concept seven years ago in the constrained area between the Marina and Island, whoever the, right in the Island, I forget, we were disturbing and modifying the outfalls.
And we got a permit.
And we got a Corps of Engineers permit, yes, so doesn't that serve as precedence? If we're not going to be building something deep in the water where they had SAV concerned, we've already gotten their approval, shouldn't that serve as a precedence?
Yeah, I mean, it's a formidable project, people replace outfalls all the time, it's not, it's just-
Well, I'm getting it, we were concerned about Core because of their objection to what we wanted to do in the water with respect to SAV. If we're not doing that, and we have a precedent saying modifying the outfalls has already been approved by you in an app, we should not have a problem with the Corps of Engineers.
I agree 100%.
Or with the general permits.
Correct, agree. I mean, I have something, I mean, I have something in writing from US Army Corps asking us to, yeah, to do this project.
Anything else, Pam?
I think I'm going to share the stage and then everybody else.
If any committee members had any comments, then we'll be done.
Frank, did you have any?
It was excellent, thank you.
Good job.
My only comment, Pam, would be, time really is of the essence of this community, and if phasing it, even if it winds up economically to be a little more restrictive in dollars, the value that it'll create by getting as much of it done early, even if it only alleviates 70% of the regular flooding we see, that adds value to this community.
And I agree, I think Chuck had a good point as far as potentially phasing the outfall reconstructions with an actuated valve system with, you know, some curbing modifications. I mean, it's going to be limited to some things because of the, you know, the vulnerable areas, but maybe that would be a phased approach that could occur more quickly.
Joe, did you have? The only thing I have to say is, I think the biggest bang for the buck is fixing the existing outfalls, because that's a major problem. Somebody say something.
Should I put area, they want to go, I'm good, I said enough.
Mayor?
Well, following up on Joe's comment, because of Seaside Park's planning board and Mayor Council, all of us together, we raised some concerns on the bayfront as to the project proposed by JCP and L, a number of issues, and they are- a number of issues, and they are proposing to replace their line right adjacent to our very popular Boat Ramp area and the pier. And among our many procedural issues, not to get even to the merits, but procedural, we said we haven't even noticed Ocean County. It's their outfall right next to this particular replaced electrical line. So our efforts, Ocean County was noticed. They participated. They were shocked. They weren't surprised. They had no idea about it. And one of the benefits that our efforts obtained for all of us is now JCP&L is going to pay for any and all permits and actually construct a brand-new outfall line for the county at 13th, at that particular area. They're going to, JCP&L is going to do it. So we do know that one, that's in the works already.
And also the construction of that line, because it hasn't been done yet, should be as impervious as possible with the construction around the cable. So that is in a conduit for water to flow through our bulkhead that we want to do. We want to set up a battery, you know? And we do have a very large gas line that comes in over at the yacht club. And that's another thing to be concerned about.
I'm sure. We have a mark out for that.
I hope so. That's a, that's a big line. That's a big line.
I wanted to return momentarily, and obviously the focus of this particular portion of the discussion has been on this particular plan, the various options and how we can move forward on an expedited basis with input from the committee and the council and through Pam's work. But I wanted to return to the comment I heard earlier part of about the issue of flooding in the Oak Street area, for example. Certainly Lake Avenue. It's, it's not something that in any way this governing body is ignoring. In fact, just the opposite. And just because the focus of this project is on this other area, we're looking and working for other areas to mitigate the circumstances. And just this week, for example, and I have it right here with Jenna assisted today, we got out. Seaside Park, as probably a lot of us know, was actually one of the leaders. And it's a prior, members of the governing body, the prior administration. There was an informal group of all bay communities, a mayor's association. Mayor Matthews was involved. And that particular group has actually grown for the nine towns involved. And it's very active and has brought about a lot of results. And most recently, where I'm going with it is we have, and Seaside Park was the first town. We have a consortium of a shared services agreement. And the focus will be strictly on obtaining state and federal funding for flooding that is representative to this entire area. And we all know with La Bolete, Normandy, Ortley, all of these areas are getting hit, especially this last winter. And we've been led to believe that very positive input has come already from the federal people as well as the state people. And we had the commissioner here of DCA on a totally unrelated event just last week. And we had the opportunity to speak to her, obviously not bound to any private conversation. But she's very, very enthusiastic about shared services agreement in general as a concept. And there's state funding. There's money available for shared services. So this is in the works. The agreement's been entered into. Every town's committed to it. We've had a minor delay. I guess with Tom's River, I won't comment. But they have committed to that. So they are going, but all of us have signed agreement. We've got the consortium up and running. It's in place. And the beauty of it is we've got large municipalities. We've got small ones, ones in between, run by different forms of government, different political parties. And the commissioner was very enthusiastic about our group, this Beach Mayor's Association with all their representatives. So I think some good things are about to happen. And I just got the calls and thank you for Jenna. We got it out today. But Seaside Park was the first town of the nine to do this. We've also got Ocean County committed. So one of the focuses obviously will be all of the areas of Seaside Park that are affected as well as our areas. And I know a lot of questions are raised and this committee has raised them as well. We know about sea level rise. We're very aware of it. And we're aware of the landmass of New Jersey sinking. But there may be something else, some other factors that have contributed post Sandy in particular. And that's one of the focuses, whether or not the dredging should have occurred as promised, didn't occur, or whether it occurred in an appropriate way. Peace mail and plus the inlets were changed when Sandy had receded. Whether or not the dredging and the inlets has contributed to this. There may be other factors involved. And that's one of the more global focuses of the group as well. So I wanted that comment to not fall on deaf ears. And I want you to be aware that we're looking at all this and with input from this committee as well. Is there anyone else on the council at this juncture? Anything as to Pam's comments or the committee? Any public comments, if you have any, as will restrict, this is under the open vote meeting. Exactly. If you could give your name and address in the record and come forth to the mic and.
Gertrude Martin, 812 North Bayview Avenue. One, I, I guess I was surprised that all this has been almost solidified before, I guess it was brought to the public knowledge, unless I missed it somewhere. My other question is, and it has to do with, if you connect with the pump house, what you're talking about doing, are you doing it on the land side where you have to dig up Bayview Avenue and run piping underneath?
Yes.
This is what you have to do? Okay. Is this before or after a bulkhead? Meaning you put up the bulkhead and then dig? Do you dig and then put up the bulkhead?
It would happen in conjunction. I.
One of them would affect the other, right?
They would happen at the same time.
What is the longevity of the project?
How long will it take to do?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I really, so we, this, this is conceptual in nature. Until you really know the full scope, it would be difficult for me to, to give you a project duration. And those things are, like, you can, you can set a project duration. Contractors may need multiple crews in order to meet the duration that you set for them. But we do need to figure out exactly what would have to happen. Like the DOT, are we going to need to do manufactured treatment devices? There's certain things that would take longer and it, you know.
We're not as far along as you think. This is a concept. We came up with this just a couple of months ago when we had a meeting. And now we're at a pier with everybody. And, and we're looking over the concepts and working things out. It's not as advanced as you think. We just got this the other day. So we're all still working on.
Oh, it just sounded like it was a done deal.
Or that. The trucks are coming next week. In front of your house.
I am truthfully just opposed to the bulkhead because it'll deteriorate further. The vegetation that does remain. And also the fact that although we're talking six and eight years ago, other than sandbags at each stream, nothing was done. The county finally stepped in. I've said this before. They put up brick wrap instead of putting it out at the shoreline. They ripped up the curving, put it there. And now all the sand just washes through. Again, it's, I find it very disheartening that the county touches anything. Just me. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Bay Harren, 21 I Street. I just have a question. This bulkhead is going to go from J Street down to 14th. Five feet up, five feet from, from the bay.
No.
No.
Bay level?
No, but it's elevation five to bay. Let's, let's say it's three feet above the road.
Okay, three feet above the road. You've got the yacht club.
Yep.
With a huge parking lot.
Yeah.
How are they going to get in?
They're going to raise it.
They would have to.
They're going to raise the property.
Same way with 14th Avenue with Boat Ramp?
Yes.
They would have to.
And Fifth Avenue.
And Fifth, yeah, those are, those are the critical design points.
And each, each pump house gets raised up a bit to the bulkhead.
Okay. And these people are going to be able to get, if you're raising it up, going up to get in there, tugging their boats behind them to get there. Okay, fine. You put a ramp in or you put steps in, the water side of them is going to get slippery, anything. And you're looking at, you know, you're looking at potential, potential lawsuits if people.
Steve will protect us from that.
It's great enough.
Shirley Crystal, 700 North Bayview Avenue. That was a lot. First of all, I think what we need to do is have a meeting with the residents. This was not put out very long ago. And as you can see, this is not nearly the crowd that we've had in the past. Now we're talking about, you know, moving into the street again. We had really spoken strongly. 75 to 90% of our flooding is from the storm drains. I watch it. That's where most of the problem is. I would first recommend that you have a meeting that is publicized to everyone, for everyone to come, give their opinions and listen to what we have to say. Because those of us that have been living through this know more than a lot of people. The storm drains are the main issue. Why can't we just attack that? And are we still trying to go forward with the other project with the oyster cages breaking the?
No.
That's completely done.
It can't get permitted.
They won't consider any other changes. They won't consider those at all. How come they were allowed in other spots and not in our bay? Why does, where was, the people that came showed them?
Lacey Township had them.
Right. Well, how is their water different?
I think that the results of that project are probably the reason why you cannot get permits. I'll be honest with you. The impact.
That, that, that's an issue somewhat in dispute. And I, we'd be getting into the weeds, but.
Why should I ask you something? I'm just going to, I'm just going to ask you a question. I, I, I just, all right, so. So dealing with the outfalls, I'm just saying, if, if we just did nothing but looked at the outfalls, okay?
Yep.
There's two components to the outfalls, okay? There's the high tide component. And then there's the component when you have heavy extensive amount of rain. Okay, there's two different things. So like, if you have a very high tide, that causes flooding, okay? So, so you shut the outfall off when the tide is high. So it can't come up through the catch basins, okay? And then it rains a lot. Where is the rain going? It's staying in the street and it's flooding, guys, because they keep it out because you cut the outfalls out from, from, from the. So there's two different things. Like, there isn't a simple solution.
The pressure of the water.
I know, I understand, but you have to shut it off. You have to stop the bay from coming in. But then you also have to, what do you do with all the rain water? When it rains, it floods your street. So like, so, so there isn't one simple solution. If, if all you want to do is address tidal flooding, you know, flooding will have some benefit if the valves hose and they operate. And there's always times where they won't function properly. But if it rains a lot and the valves are closed, your road is going to flood. And there's no.
Most of these valves, however, if the water is coming this way, that flap is down. If the water's going this way, it opens up to allow it out.
But the tide is upon your road. It's not opening. It's not opening.
You've got a situation where you've got the tide coming in, the valve is closed, whether it be manual or automatic. And then it starts to pour.
But if we hooked up to the pump station, what you're talking about.
Different.
Okay. So what I'm saying is I think there's going to be a lot of residents who want to speak on this issue and speak about you. Because it almost sounded like, like Bert said, like it's a done deal. Like, okay, we're going to put this wall in the street and this is what we're going to do. We need to put this out there and let everybody think about it. And I know the storm drains and I don't trust the county. Because we've been trying to get the county to just put something by H Street. Every time the, it's a high tide. It doesn't even have to be a storm. The water comes right over. How many times have I come here and said, the county has to put something there.
The only thing else in my heart is a failure. You have to raise the grade.
Excuse me. They put sand where there wasn't even a problem. And you expect the county to help us. Well, why can't you get the county to do that? That would stop a lot of the flooding right there for the people right in that area. And then we've got more storm drains down. And my street was raised. And yes, that's helped somewhat. But because you put a storm drain now on Bayview Avenue, I flood more in the front of my property than I did before the storm drain was there. I want a public meeting, letters to go out, reverse 911. I don't care what it is. Let everybody in this town know and have a meeting for everyone.
If you say that happens, you've got to come up with some kind of idea.
We were planning on doing that sometime in August. So we have more answers to. So these are just suggestions, but nothing's being done.
Absolutely.
That's right.
I heard somebody say that they wanted to really push on this. So you're not until we do.
Don't the residents want to push something?
Yes. But we want to have, we want to understand what's going on in all this.
The purpose of this is to come up with ideas, present to a public meeting for instance.
Okay, thank you.
Shirley, one of our recommendations is the residents of the borough are in need of information and action. Numerous comments have been made at council meetings and directly to committee members requesting what and when mitigation work will be done. Our recommendation to the mayor, and this is just, you know, what we came up with, was the committee recommends a meeting of the council and bayfront committee be done as part of a work session. We're here today doing that.
Okay.
Furthermore, we recommend that a public meeting focused on allowing the public to comment directly to the committee and a presentation of the what and when responses be provided. The residents living and vacationing within the 100-year flood plain cannot endure a 13th year of flood anxiety and property loss without material efforts being raised by the borough and county. I think we summed up a lot of what you said and a lot of what we've heard from residents of town. So I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, it just seemed like we worked it that this is what is being presented and this is what you guys are going to decide on. That's how it was coming across. Thank you.
I want to comment on one of, I think it was an inference of what Shirley may have said if I read you correctly. I may be in the minority. And there are a number of individuals whose opinions I have respect greatly with knowledge have raised skepticism about the other project. I haven't given up on it. And there are some areas out there where we've got applications pending for funding. So if that funding were to happen to come in and the permitting, I got vibes there was a change of heart from the Army Corps, maybe unrelated to our situation. But apparently that has happened. So I haven't necessarily given up on it.
Thanks, John.
And I can ask Pam, I think, am I correct to say, we've talked about this in a preliminary sense, if we were to, with all input, everybody digesting this proposal, one of the options were hybrid there, that wouldn't necessarily contradict going ahead with the other plan in that particular area along the heart skirt.
I mean, the borough, yeah, the, the borough, mayor, council has the final say on how they want to proceed as far as a design and permitting aspect. It's just, you know, to date, we have not received positive feedback with regards to the existing design.
And we haven't, we've discussed it a lot, but we haven't made a solid recommendation to abandon that project at all.
No, I mean.
Let me go back to what I.
I know where some of the concerns were. And as I said, there's some opinions right at this table I respect greatly. And they raise concerns. But that particular meeting took place with the safe on a good bay. And for whatever reason, the missing tape, it's, everybody's tried to get a tape of it. And it's no longer available on YouTube. So I, I've talked to the players who were there. Captain Al Majewski is a. so I, I've talked to the players who were there, Captain Al Majeski of the American Literary Society has had a spirited disagreement, it's safe to say, with Dr. Lacy. We've worked with both of them here in Seaside Park over the years, they're both renowned experts, we have an SAB person that we've also consulted with, is Dr. Belongna, so he's actually gonna be in the area next week, so maybe we can ask him that directly, but...
But if I can, what I brought up before is, if we work out engineering, have the meeting with the town, get the input, anything we do with hardscape, if we do something in the future to mitigate waves out in the bay that's approved, they are additive, they do not subtract from one another. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Joe, in the back there, is next, I know you've been very patient, so, okay, then we'll go to Joe, yes?
Hi, I'm Dino Morphol, I'm a resident in Seaside Park on F Street, and I'm in the middle of the block, and, you know, I destroyed it sandy, we didn't build, and I just thought, I wanna show you these pictures from thirty years ago, this was our bay, right there on F Street, because my younger daughter was with me, and this is what, it's not there now. So I know the people that have been here all that time probably knew that, but that's what it used to look like, and that wasn't, I didn't, you know, this was way back, way back. She's thirty-eight, that's, so, that's thirty years ago. But, um, these are like winter pictures that I take when I'm here, you know, and I'm, I'm up on my deck, it's, you know, ten, twenty, about twenty feet up there, and I can't even go down because this is what it looks like coming off F Street, and I'm in the middle of the block. So I get this view a lot of times, and I'm sure that people do too, so I just, I'll share this. I, I'm sorry, because I was out all day, I didn't even know about this meeting. My neighbor, who is also a resident, the Obrandes, sent it to me from their cruise earlier this morning before I left the house, so I got home late, and I threw this here, so, you wanna share this when you go talk to your people? I know you have all those drone things, but, like, this is, these are real. I mean, and it is, and January was the worst, because I literally lost those too, but the winter is the worst. A lot of people aren't sure they don't see that, but I just feel like it happens, so I'll just show you.
Thank you.
You can put them in your little evidence thing if you want, the picture.
Are you...
You can have, I just would like, put in my information, and this was, this is me, I just would like one picture back in the hand, but you can have all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Arisold, 37 10th Avenue, 6th Line. And listen to what you said, and Charles, you live on the same street, and you go down to the corner of Tenth Avenue and Barnegat. The drain that's set up there, the storm drain, at all times, the dirt is here, and this is no exaggeration, and this is the grade above it. That can catch very little water.
Nothing.
Very little. I've asked once before if they would dig it out, they tried to dig it out, it was unsuccessful. But by chance, I was talking to the people from IBW, FYZ, whatever the company is, the pumping stations, they said that there's a machine that can come in and suck that dirt out of the, the storm drain, and the water have a place to exit, because if we build a wall to prevent the storm water from getting down there, then we're gonna get drowned by the storm, by the rain, there'd be no place for it to go. Is that part of the plan, to make the, the storm drains active, to work on?
They would flow to the DOT pump station.
That, that's another problem.
Yes.
If anybody stops by and talks to the folks that are working on it, they would tell you that what's happening underneath is the pumps are being firstly affected by the sand that they're picking up that's being poured out by the water that's going through. And then you get, then you go walk around over the curb and look at the bay, and the bay around that is probably this deep, because we want the sand that's being pumped out.
There's a significant amount of sand that's being washed up when the tide is high, so we're actually trying to prevent the sand from getting into the pump station, that would be the goal, so it would operate more efficiently.
The sand's not coming from the bay, it's coming from the storage, it's coming from the drains that are going to the bay.
They leak.
They're picking up sand. When we get to the pumps, something about the appellers get screwed up by the sand.
Did it get water?
Well, when the, when the tide is high, and the, and the water reaches the curb, there is sand that washes into the street.
I'll give you that.
So that, that is the source, the majority of the sand, I think, is coming from the bay, being washed into the street.
I, I know what he's talking about, but if you, if you take a ride, I mean, it's gonna be here tomorrow, I doubt that, but if you went to the pumping stations between the areas where you're gonna do this miracle job, you're gonna find that there's a rounded station, there's large amounts of sand, they're very shallow. I don't think that's contributing to our protection, that means the bay's getting even I don't know what you're gonna do about that.
If there's, if there is sand, you're saying the sand's coming in, you know, through the storm, there, there's, yeah, there's, there's going to be sand in any stormwater pump station that's constructed in a coastal area, there's, there's going to be sand.
So, Joe, if you look at the outfall, there's an island out there now.
Yes.
It's a huge amount, and a lot of it looks to me like builder's sand, because that's what they backfilled the pipes with, and they told me they leak.
Yeah.
And sand goes in the pipes, goes through, gets ground up, macerator, gets messed up, you know, the appellers, and they're rebuilding them all the time. The, the point I wanted to make earlier, I don't, maybe I wasn't clear, was when you turn the valves off, the, the storm drain, say we put gate valves in, and, and those outfalls, the tides come up, you turn it off, when it rains, the DOT, in their infinite design wisdom, they put basins, catch basins in where they suck up water right there in front of the pump station. It's right there. So as Bay Avenue floods from storm water, in my opinion, the water will flow to those areas. It might be six inches deep, like we always have along Bayview, but it'll all flow right to those drains, and it'll pump out right from there without connecting to some degree. The calculation is needed to see just how that happens, but the water would flow down Bayview and get to that one, and it would go down Bayview on the north side and get to that other one. We, we would have flooding on the other side of the wall with everything, but the water would flow, and, and we get, we get a foot of water anyway, so, that, that was my conceptual design. I'm, I'm a big one on modeling these things, and, and putting in the pump rates and, and doing some modeling, but, uh, we're going down that road, so I think, I understand what you're saying, and if you look at that island that's forming outside those pipes, it's, it's pretty bad.
He's talking about a basin that's a block away, right, that's full of sand, it just needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, they don't, it sounds, they don't function, right. That's what we brought up before, some of them can't be repaired.
Since they've been put in, they've been there probably three to five days a week.
At the pump station.
At the pump station.
Yeah, but that's not what you, you talked about first. The saturation of that, that Barnegat, and, and...
Right.
If that's full of sand, I don't know how that's related, and it should be cleaned out.
Because it's, it's another place to flush, and it doesn't go anywhere.
It's a very low area, too.
Okay.
It doesn't go anywhere.
If it's full of sand, it needs to be cleaned, right?
But don't, we don't have the equipment to clean it?
I don't know about that.
Do we, John?
I don't know if we have that in-house. I don't, I don't, I don't think you're wrong about that. A, a machine that actually goes into the storm drains?
No, no, it's something that goes in the basin, things like that.
Yeah, vacuum, that's, no, we don't have that piece of equipment.
Someone can rent it in the county, just to see if it works.
We'll have the county do it.
Or have the county do it, but that, I won't...
Uh, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Edie? Excellent. I know, you've been patient, sorry.
Eighty, like, forty-eighth Eleventh Avenue. I just have two questions. One, Pam, you said that if we can construct a new bulkhead and keep the current bulkhead, that that would be advantageous. My question is, what would be in between the two of them?
With what? With vegetation on top of it?
Okay.
Well, there could be a question.
The bigger question, which the mayor just kind of referred to when he gets into your question, my question is about funding. I know that we've had funding in the past that, I don't wanna use the term "has been lost," but it no longer exists. Am I correct that we have to have a concrete plan with permits in place before we can apply for funding? Which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
You can apply for funding, but if that funding is what the agency, I think wrongfully, might declare inordinately delayed, but it's caused by the agency itself, then the agency decides that you haven't acted promptly and efficiently on it, and they pull the funding. But in answer to your question, yes, you can apply for funding without the permits.
Okay, so would this application for funding be included as part of the plan, in addition to the components of the plan of what to do? To me, it's a two-pronged thing. We decide what we're gonna do and go forward with that, and will we at the same time then be applying for funding and hoping that we can get within the time limit so that the agency doesn't pull the money?
I mean, I, I feel that would be the goal of the municipality, yeah. I mean, typically...
Okay, and I only raise that, maybe it's, this is not the meeting for that, but I only raise that because to me, that's a big part of this. Doesn't matter what we...
No, it's just the paper.
If we don't have any money, we might as well just go home. Okay.
We budget for this every year in hopes it's, it's a big-ticket item in the capital budget, in hopes that we get the permits, and we also apply for grant grants. I would, I would surmise that because they've pulled those grants twice, we get a favorable award again, and it's actually increased the amount they awarded us last time, but again, it needs the permits.
And maybe we can get a much cheaper plan for the bulk buildings and some of that money.
Any other, yes, sir? The one, yes.
Hi, Mary John Nicholson, 208 South Bayview Avenue. I live directly across the street from the yacht club, so, and I'm experiencing quite a bit of flooding, as everybody else is. I have a question in terms of your height of that bulkhead that you're putting in. How high is that yacht club parking lot existing right now in terms of the elevation that you wanna bring it to five feet?
I believe it's about two and a half, two and a half feet, actually, I, I don't have detailed spots of the parking lot, but I have some contours and some shots of that dune, which are, you know, between two and two and a half feet, it looks like.
Okay, so that's a lot, a lot higher. You're gonna have then ramps of those driveways then going up in, in, in climb.
Yeah, I don't have the...
My, my next question is, because you're raising that, how is that going to affect the houses right there in terms of the water runoff? And, and as it is, Third Avenue is always underwater as of last night and this afternoon, and it's constantly coming up, so what are we gonna do about that? Now, how are we rectifying that?
The goal would be to redirect the runoff underground with pipes.
Okay, we have, on the yacht club, partial, um, part of the yacht club as well, we have the gas line, that's underground, that's coming to Bayview Avenue. We also have underground wires going to the building now, so that, you also have to consider that as well, because I see in this plan, you also have the, um, your bulkheading going along the side of the property, which will be, you know, you're gonna have to pile drive it down, correct?
Yes, so all, yes, all existing utilities, I know the gas main is something that's going to be, you know, a, a component of, of the design that would have to be coordinated with...
Okay, plus with our concrete driveway as well, and then you also have on the, looking at it on the right-hand side, you have underground wires there.
Yes, and that, that's something that...
So you have to be, you know, who, who's, you know, here I'm gonna be the other half, the yacht club, in a sense. Sorry, John, I don't mean to interfere with that question, but...
You're a member of the yacht club asking your question.
So my question to you is, who's, who's incurring that cost?
That would have to be coordinated with the, with the utilities, so that, that, everything would have to be coordinated with the utilities as far as the location and possible relocation, it, it would, it would have to be addressed with the gas company and the electric company.
Yeah, but my biggest concern is on Bayview Avenue with the houses existing that, that are there, and the runoff coming off from this higher level elevation of land now is going to be pissed, turned up.
They're not raising the whole...
Yeah, it would be just, there's two options, yeah.
I don't think this is...
Am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah, I think you are.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, where'd you get that one? I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Is this one?
I agree that that is a problem area that will require more coordination.
Parking and everything, there's kind of a ramp, driveway up and over.
More coordination.
Okay, okay.
Here it over.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the only way it could work right there.
All right, because I was concerned about any runoff that would be coming towards the hull of the street.
No, I, no, it's a valid concern, and we would wanna minimize the runoff as, as much as possible, but there, I personally have, have not, and I don't know, as far as the borough goes, like, this, this is conceptual in nature, but the existing utilities and coordination with the yacht club is a significant component to, to, you know, anything on that property moving forward, so...
Thank you very much.
That's all. Yes, sir, you've been most patient of all.
Hi, I'm John Stoll, 1001 South Ocean Avenue. Some of you people may remember me from childhood, you know me as Jay Stoll. Anyway, friends of mine were working on the border wall years ago, and our plan was to build a big glass wall with special coating, make it bulletproof, bombproof, setting flying debris, not break the glass, Charles could still see the bay, sunset. I would make that wall also coated for anti-chip, so it wouldn't chip, and also coat that wall so that it generates electricity, so the wall would generate electricity and pay for itself. So, it's a nice idea, I don't know if it'd generate enough electricity to run those pumps, or any type of centrifugal pump to get rid of the sand, but it's something to consider, I'm not saying it's a solution, but you might wanna consider it. You could also consider hydrogen generators, they run on water, generate all kinds of power, and also the latest, which is fusion generators, that's the latest that's hitting the market in about one to two years in cars, all kinds of crazy, millions of miles per gallon, if you wanna call it a gallon. So, something to consider, glass wall, block debris, block the water. Problem I see is, oh, what about the rainwater coming from the underside? You can still see a beautiful sunset, solve a lot of your problems, but not all, so that's my suggestion. I threw my two cents.
Thank you. Yes.
Michelle Miller, 1500 Lake Avenue, thank you for keeping Oak Street in mind. John, a comment to you, a couple years ago, they tried to pump the sand out of Oak Street Lagoon. They did it for weeks, and that sand kept on coming back, so the people that live there, as a matter of fact, a big boat can't come in anymore, but they weren't able to solve it, so I don't know how that would roll out, but it's, it's an issue. I have another question, though. When you're saying that...
When you're saying that Central Avenue is at four feet, now, we redid Central Avenue much to much of our dismay, and it's just been redone, but it's four feet. So you're going to put roads to five feet higher. So all of this, and the raised roads should not affect Central Avenue, other than the fact that the pumps are...
One day, we might raise the roads incrementally. That would be another phase.
Okay. And I guess, Pam, oftentimes you see, keep on saying, you have to do this or whatever. So this plan now is your new goal, or suggestions for the council. It's now in writing, so you'll work hard at trying to let us navigate this, because there's been such a gap, and that's really sad. I know DOT is hard to deal with. You're dealing with all the engineers, but somehow or other, you need to direct us much better on what our next step should be. So thank you, committee, for getting together again and keep it up.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, I'm Terri Saya. I live at three hundred South Bayview Avenue on the corner of Third and Bayview. The worst part on the whole Bayview Avenue. My question is, why haven't we asked the county to build up our curb all from J Street that abuts the beach all the way through Bayview and just tighten it, just the curb? Isn't that easy to do? Shouldn't that be their responsibility? There are parts of the curb that have completely washed away down from like I Street or Eighth Street. They put the sandbags down. They're absolutely useless. So why can't Seaside Park ask the county immediately? That would be a huge fix, a huge fix, a relief. Keep the vegetation and the sand at least, if they could hire it, you know, two feet, and then that would help. The second thing is, how many new check valves do we have, or the valves that you set? I think we have two, correct? In the last couple of years, Seaside Park has put two in place?
There's three locations that I am aware of that our office was involved in with the municipal DOT grants. One at F Street, one at G Street, and then there was one at Twelfth Avenue. However, I don't know if there was any other added. However, you know, there has, they have not proven to be as effective as we would have liked them to be.
Now, who controls the shut-off when the tide is rising?
So the tie flex valves are not actuated. They are operated based off pressure. So they're always closed, okay? And when it rains, the pressure of the rainwater is supposed to open them. However, if there's debris in the line or if the tide is high, they don't open. So they're gravity tie flex valves. They are not operated with electrical components. They're not actuated valves.
Okay, several years ago, we were encouraged, I went to the Ocean County Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. They had a very informative presentation to all of Ocean County on the coast and what they were doing with the levees at the inlets and all that. At the time, I sat next to a town official from Beach Haven. They had passed three point two million dollars and were rebuilding their catch basins and outflow, outflow pipes with new valve systems that were from like Germany. I got the Kaiser card, I passed it on to Matt and several other town councilmen and women at the time. I know Matt was looking into that and several other councils. That system was completely put in place. I don't understand why, A, you put them in three different locations. It would have been better to put them consecutively so we could actually determine the efficiency of them. And why can't we work on those right now? The water comes in every single day, every single day. People are passing on Bayview Avenue, leaping over from sidewalk to, you know, over the water. Every single day. It's not just the rain. You know, you're focusing so much on the rain and the, that. The tide is rising. It comes in every day. It comes in on Fifth, Seventh, up and down the entire bay. Why aren't you focusing on the catch basins, repairing them, or lifting them up and getting the outflow pipes and the new valve system on there? I really think that is the first phase that you need to do, absolutely. And we've been talking about this for years. We need to really do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Al?
Tom Joseph, seven oh four South Bayview Avenue. I'm between Seventh and Eighth, so I've got a natural area across the street from me. So one of my concerns is that I would not want to see that destroyed in the process of doing this. But I also have a good view of the pump house at Eighth Avenue, and when you sit down with the DOT to talk to them about tying into the pump house, you might remind them that a large fraction of the water that ends up in Bayview flows right by that pump house. And those idiots that installed it there and cut into the natural area to do it set up one of the worst flood issues that we have in my part of Bayview. And as far as I'm concerned, there's more water coming in there than is coming from rainwater or anything else. So if they want us to give them something, why don't we suggest to them what we won't give them is the lawsuit they deserve for all the property damage that that's caused? Let's think about that, and maybe they can cooperate with us, because we really would like them to cooperate with us, and we would like to cooperate with them. I want to talk about a different topic, but I don't want to get in the middle of this. So when we're done with this, I'd like to come back to a different topic from the working session. But like I said, I don't want to get in the middle of this, so if you could call on me after this is done, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
So same question as earlier, so Rita Poole, two sixty-five Oak Street. Why is that out of scope for the plan? Why does it end at I? Does O and N get tons of flooding? And when you do something like this, will it get more water as a result? Because water has to go somewhere.
But the one thing that I just want to note is that, you know, that area would be outside of the range of potentially tying into the DOT pump stations at this location. So it would, for this particular project, I think that we were looking at trying to move forward with the DOT as far as utilizing their pump stations.
Nothing's being considered for that area? And fixing this, would it further impact that? Because sometimes when projects are done...
I know that there was a pilot program that was done with RaPro, which was a tie flex valve company, but I think that was K Court, K Street. So I, which is in that area, and if it was more successful, I know they were going to continue to add additional valves over by N and Oak Street. It is my understanding that the valve at that location wasn't as successful, but I would like to revisit that even with the Public Works Director and confirm. It's been a couple of years since that pilot was performed, but I do know that there was a pilot program that the county was involved with and the borough was involved with that included installing valves at various locations. And I know that K Street area was one of the, or I think it was K Court, I apologize. But I'd like to go back and revisit that, and I could possibly get your information and just kind of give you an update after I confirm with the Public Works Director.
So no consideration for this project going beyond I, just the pump stations?
I mean, I can't attest to this.
Our focus as a committee has been in this area from the different projects that have established. As you go north, the bulkhead elevations have a lot to do with it, and surveying all those and getting all that data. It's a different type of system up there. You do have a pump station up there, one over by...
On K or L?
L Street.
L Street.
So there is a pump station on that road, but we have not addressed that. We've been focused on this.
We get sucked in our house for days with the office.
Yeah, same here.
Thank you. Al?
Alex Condes, forty-four Seventh Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank the committee for donating your time to try to see exactly what we're going to do on that. Thank the engineering firm. It's a tough situation. We do realize that there's two separate things going on here at the same time. There's the stormwater runoff, okay? And then there's the flooding. Well, everybody knows here that the water's, it's fighting itself. The bay wants to come this way, the stormwater wants to go this way, but the stormwater, the baywater, the flooding, the high tide is coming up through the drains. We all know that, okay? And again, Terry was saying, Third Avenue is the first place that floods. I drove around all night for many years studying it, believe it or not, because this was a topic from twenty-five years ago, at least, okay? That the previous governing body wanted to address with a GeoTube that might be something similar to the riprap, I don't know what exactly. But the dredge boils that were taken from the yacht club, okay, are supposed to be stuck in a sock, okay? And lay it against, right in front of Charlie Pretzel's house, okay, right along, right there. That was going to be the pilot start to see if we could rebuild a shoreline, okay? And I will say, with all respect, Pam, that I do not believe that we should encroach on the road. We want to make, we want to put a wider barrier between the houses that when you drive down Ocean Avenue, the water's slapping up against people's front doors, for God's sakes, okay? To create, to put the shoreline out. I know it's going to require the DEP approval, but we have to present our case as a town, okay, that this is clearly a problem and it's a quality of life issue, especially for the houses directly on Bayview Avenue. And the DEP is going to have to comply, give the permit, research it, whatever it is, okay? You know, everyone's afraid to, oh, we're going to put dirt, and with all respect, we're going to affect vegetation and so on and so forth. We want to try to build that up in the westerly direction, okay? Not use six feet of the road. It's kind of, it's a drop in the bucket with the amount of land. It's just my personal opinion. I know we have engineers, and you guys are way more versed in this, and Joseph has done pipes, and Rob's an engineer with the county and all this. I'm just saying that you need to kind of go in the other direction. And if that means going into the bay and filling some of it in, which was the proposed idea twenty-five years ago, okay, because in all my junk and all my boxes, I have the proposals from Baypoint Engineering about the GeoTube, okay? Those spoils never got into a sock, and that project never came to fruition, all right? Those spoils are sitting right where, at I Street, right by Gert Martin's house, okay? That's where those spoils are sitting. And you want to know what grew there in the past twenty-five years? Vegetation, okay? That's what's there now. That's a big pile of dredge spoils, okay, sitting on Borough Marina property, just so everybody knows. I have the photographs of it when it was put there, okay? And that project never came to fruition. So I understand people's frustrations, like Gert Martin's, okay, saying, what the heck's going on here? We've been talking about this. This is ongoing. This is ongoing. I'm not blaming anybody in particular, okay, but I'm just saying, we really got to kind of work on, work on a solution. And one other thing was that, we're talking about this stormwater runoff from Bayview Where is the water going from Ocean Avenue? Where's the stormwater, water going from Ocean Avenue? In what direction does it go?
Towards the bay.
It all goes to the bay. Comes down, it comes down the side streets, it whips around, it goes under, it collects, goes underneath Route Thirty-five, goes back up, and goes down through the bay. The idea of cutting off these outwalls and having all this water collect in these two pump stations, whether we get approval or not from the DOT to be able to utilize, well, I'm not an engineer, but that's a lot of water, because you're taking the water from the whole town, okay? You're not just taking the water from, from Bayview Avenue, collecting it there. And I think a lot of us, you know, know that here, but that's just something that I want, you know, I just kind of want to put that out there and have people have a little better understanding about how much water we're dealing with. And it's going to be, it's a challenge, you know? I mean, we know that. But I just, just, you know, wanted to mention about that GeoSock thing. It's been grinding my gears, preparing gears, okay? Every time I drive down Bayview Avenue, okay, by Charlie Pretzel's house right there, by, you know, F Street, G Street right there, all right, when the water's coming up over, that's exactly where that GeoSock, GeoSock was going to go. And then it was going to get covered over, okay, with vegetation, for the natural vegetation to, you know, take on its own. And nothing ever happened. Here we are, twenty twenty-four. It's blowing my mind that we're actually still talking about this, okay? It's so old, it's going to be new again. Thank you, and thank you for everything that the committee has done.
As far as the bulkhead world goes, Al? As far as the bulkhead world goes, the location hasn't been, again, a concept, it's only, but the location is something to be talked about, played with.
And the GeoTubes they put at Island Beach, they all failed. Something's broken.
So there'll be three island... Is it Pam?
Yes.
Pam, I want to look at Sheet Four and Sheet One, and particularly the seawall termination ends. And the seawall termination ends.
Okay.
You have one terminating at Marina, where the close seawall end. And you have the elevation of that area there, just the shell, is about three feet. And then you have the bulkhead, and then you have the bulkhead, I think it's about three, and it slips down about one, one and a half foot. The bulkhead of the marina.
At the marina, so they're saying...
Talking about the marina.
All right, sorry, yes. We're starting at the marina. So this was something that I did bring up at the last public committee meeting. As far as, right now, there is some articulating concrete matting that was installed next to the groin. So the groin that extends into the waterways, it's varying elevation, but there is a top of bulkhead of about five. At the bend, there's the existing bulkhead within the marina, you know, which I, you know, it can potentially be elevated as, at the next time it's replaced, but that bulkhead is not elevation five right now. So that's something further, it's a further cause as the project gets looked at. That was one of the talking points that I had brought up about the ending of the bulkhead. You would like to tie it into a bulkhead that would be replaced at the same elevation within the marina.
So I'm familiar with that area. I do have a boat in Marina, and I do see the southern, all summer, and the waves just pattern realize that, that bulkhead of the marina, which stops a lot of the wave activity there, but it is old and... And this may be a time to revisit that area and and tie it into your existing project and and run that across into the existing bulkhead and and utilize just that that area there and bring that up to the five foot on the beach also. You know what I'm talking about? You see that area there?
I know, I agree.
We are looking at that. Redoing that bulkhead at the marina.
Looking at sheet four or five and.
The reason why, the reason why that, the reason why that bulkhead currently isn't tied directly into the bulkhead at the marina is because the existing bulkhead has tiebacks. So there's a lot of infrastructure behind that existing bulkhead. So it would be the tie-in would preferably occur when that when the existing marina bulkhead would be replaced. There would be a plan to tie it in.
Committee's looking at.
No, we're looking at that project now.
You're looking, you're reviewing that project now.
As separate from this is.
So the land, so the land that's about three, three and a quarter, that'll be open. And unfortunately, your proposal, you're going to raise that to five or just leave it at three?
I mean, I think that.
The yacht club up to five, right? You're going to raise the land, the elevation of the yacht club.
The the entrance ways, it's still up for further discussion, but the you would have a raised access into into the yacht club parking lot, correct?
Do you don't think it'll be, it'll be, it'll have a negative effect into that area where where the parking is that behind where the boats park? If it's not bulkheaded? Do you understand what I'm saying? That's an elevation at three, you're bulk, you're.
That's a concern. The the concern is that's going to be a vulnerable area for flanking around the wall because, yes. So so the in the elevation of of the bulkhead has not been fully vetted. This is a conceptual meeting. However, the concern that was that may dictate what the proposed elevation of the bulkhead would be. But it has already been brought up to the hard work committee about the the benefit to potentially replacing and elevating the bulkhead in the marina. So that way, they're all at the same elevation.
Do you consider that you've talked about?
It is something that has been discussed.
No, no, we haven't, we haven't talked about it ourselves.
No, they've considered it separate from that.
We have a whole other study on that. Our project.
Water at the end, you know, I say, so look at the south end, just can you.
The south end at 14th, option one.
I see the rip rack again as it huts into the parking lot. Then you have to post seawall to end in the existing retaining wall. That's the retaining wall that's out by the bay adjacent to the rip.
Sir, could I just see, which plan do you have? Do you have option one or option two?
One or five.
And then it says at the bottom, it says, does it say option? Okay, so that's option one. Yeah, there's two different plans. So they show different proposals as far as accessibility. So this this in here, yeah, so this bulkhead here.
Well, that's the existing bulkhead.
This this elevation is at a five.
So what is this, so this is your proposed end here, right, with the rip rack? But that's the existing. So what is this in here, that that black area?
This would be raised up, so the grade would, the grade would have to go up and then the photograph would have to be reconstructed.
We've got a regular meeting next week. You do that, okay, so you're going to raise, you're going to raise that to five.
The details, the details of that, it's going to be contentious on the actual.
We have to have another time, Pam, step before. Sylvia, why don't you give your email to Pam and then she could address whatever specific question.
If that would be helpful, I have a business card.
We have a whole regular meeting yet to go. We haven't started yet.
I know this has raised a lot of questions and a lot of comments, but I have to thank the mayor and council for having this open discussion of the conceptual ideas available for people to have input. I'd like to offer a breath of fresh air and ask about something different. My question has to do with the lightning detection system. Because that was on the agenda. My question is, and I understand what the attorney is saying.
We can excuse our committee there, very patient.
Thank you for the, to the committee. My question is.
Thank you, thank you. Great job. Thank all you all, very much. Thank you, Pam.
The woman has to wait.
I'm going to watch the TV now.
So what you were questioning.
It's about the lightning detection system. And I understand what the attorney is saying about NOAA and the plan. I happen to agree. Oh, let me just give them a chance.
Can we put the papers out to the door of the back chair, maybe? Does that be okay? I'll move these to the back. Thank you. I'm just going to move these to the back of the wall. Thank you.
Yes, Amy?
Yes.
About the lightning detection system?
And I I understand what attorney, so far as he was saying about the NOAA plan and you have to have the plan. However, my concern is the same as Council member condos. My question is, what are other towns doing that have this lightning detection system? And that may not be something you can answer tonight. Are they also restricting their plan from the nine or nine thirty to five? So that's my question and you can bring me back the answer next time.
Many answers? No, they're, Ortley uses a lighting detection system from A A to eight D. Brick Beach uses it, I believe it's an hour before and an hour after lifeguards are on. And they leave their strobe lights on year round.
Okay, so is that something we could look into as to why they feel they can do that? And hopefully, they're not in jeopardy of, you know, litigation and maybe adjust our hours to be more helpful to them.
The answer is yes. I said we can look to amend the plan. Right now, I'd like to go with what we have.
Now, let me just wonder if we should table what we have until we.
Well, I put the plan in effect right away. We want to get the system up and running.
All right.
How much did it cost us for the equipment?
About? About $48,000.
Forty-eight six, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Pat Ursula, 137 10th Avenue. I wanted to just speak to that same issue. I definitely support Ray and Gina. This would seem to me, please install it and activate it, activate it tomorrow on whatever you're going to vote on tonight. But please do not let this go. People are surfing. People are walking. People are stepping into the water. There must be a way to have a two-part plan. One part for when the lifeguards are on duty and the other part that says, we are just alerting you. It's an alert system. We're not rescuing you necessarily, but we're alerting people that there's some possible lightning in the area. Please continue to work on this and come up with a system that keeps it on, I'd say, well, face is 24/7. I don't know about that, but at least dawn to 10 o'clock at night, there are kids going in that water. And I want them to be safe, whether it says no swimming allowed or not. I don't, I don't know if you know, but there's a gentleman in town whose son was hit by lightning at Island Beach State Park 12 years ago, 15 years ago, I don't know when it was. We were all sitting on the beach that day, sitting there, blue skies. He had blue skies over him. They say the lightning came from 10 miles away. Please consider to really not let this go. I trust Gina and Ray will keep bringing it up until you come up with an additional plan.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pam.
Yes.
Sitting a long time there. Mike Spatafino, 59th Avenue. To continue on the line of thought that you were presenting, is this system called a beachfront lightning warning system? Is this a beachfront lightning warning system?
I mean, the brand name is Strike Guard.
Yes, but is it a beachfront lightning warning system?
Go for my.
The answer is no. The answer is no. And in all respect, Mr. Barsky is an attorney and I've been on council before and I know if I say, Mr. Barsky, here it is, give me an answer. What he did is you gave him something to do, he gave you an answer. But the thing about it is that you have to think outside of the box. Now, I live half a block away from the beach and if the lightning deterrent system, isn't it for me too?
Yes.
If I'm in my yard or I'm on my deck or I'm standing outside my house, isn't this warning system for me too?
Yes.
It is. And so why does it have to be that Mr. Barsky came up and he's talking about safety for people on the beach when it should be just a townwide lightning warning system for everybody, which changes the parameters of what he was asked to present to you? So that's why Councilperson Condos, Councilperson Abubio, I think you need to keep fighting for this because dusk till till dawn or or dawn till dusk minimally should be what the system should be doing. And there should be no liability because it's for everybody in town, everybody. A block away, two blocks away, standing on the bay. It's not a beachfront problem, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I move on to the next? Okay. So the other issue I have is with this vigorous opposition to wind farms. Now, Councilwoman Condos, Mayor Peterson, you went to the B O H M presentation of all the effects and research regarding windmills. And you know that that is researched information. What was presented for you to vote on tonight was a a situation where there's a lot of mistruths, unfounded research, not based things. Because it's like a lot of things, if I commission you to do a research for me and you know what I want, you're going to find any miniscule little thing that says, I don't agree with the science. And you're going to say, these guys don't agree with the science and I'm presenting that as the facts involved, not true. Most of that information that is in, what they're asking you to do is not true. Having been a councilman, I want to tell you that I am very sympathetic to you because I, as a councilman in the past, have had the gun held to my head with a town that was neighboring us on either side, asking us to support a movement or something that they wanted to do that I did not agree with. But then, when I go to the county meeting, Mayor Peterson, he's going to have to face these people and say, well, they'll say, John, what, why you didn't back us? Why didn't you back us? Putting him in a very precarious position and all of you. And it's not fair because you should not have a gun held to your head just because they are short towns, just like your short town. And so I really believe that you have already answered the question. Over a year ago, you decided to vote that you did not support wind farms. I don't see any reason in the world why you should have to do it again just to help have that gun held to your head again. It's B S. Don't do it.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Now, this gentleman.
Someday, John, you're going to remember my name, but apparently it's not today. It's Tom Joseph, 707th Avenue. And as many times as I've stood up here.
It's late, I can't remember much.
Okay, I don't know what to tell you. I remember your name and I'm older than you are, probably. All right. Mike touched on the topic I want to talk about. This resolution that you talked about in the working session on vigorous opposition to wind farms is a piece of partisan propaganda. It is full of mistruths, exaggerations, scare tactics. It's written by somebody who is deathly afraid that wind farms are going to cause world wars to breed. And treating that as a serious resolution and worse, treating that as if it represents the views of this town. I don't care if it represents John's views. I don't care if it represents your views, Gina, or anybody, individuals. But to put the thing together and purport to be representing this town with that piece of unbelievably ridiculous assertions. I I'll give you a simple example. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about what's wrong with it, but I'll give you a very simple example. Have any of you ever walked up to the top of one of the burms like, I live near Seventh Avenue. So when I walk to the beach, I go up to Seventh Avenue and at the top of the berm, I look out on the ocean and off in the distance, sometimes I see ships.
Yep.
Freighters, container ships, whatever. I have never once, and I don't know anybody else who has ever looked at that ship out there and gone, damn, I'm never going to the beach again because that's that's spoiling my view of the unspoiled ocean. Well, guess what? You can see those ships a hell of a lot better than you will ever see these wind farms because frankly, you can't see the wind farms that this document references from anywhere in Seaside Park, period. And you can't see them from anybody driving down from the north to come to Seaside Park. The fact is, you can't see them from anybody driving up from the south because the damn things are 10 miles off Atlantic City. And in order to see them at all, and someday, if they do build them, if they build them, I'm going to drag down to Atlantic City so I can see them at least once. And they're going to be little tiny things on the horizon. And that Bureau of Ocean Energy Management meeting they had over in Thomas River that I know you were at, John, because we talked there and you knew my name that day.
I wasn't there. Thank you for.
I wasn't going to blame you for that. That was Mike's Mike's assertion. I know John was there because I.
I've gone to rallies, but I haven't been at that meeting.
Anyway, they had photoshopped pictures of the view of them, but they were done scientifically and they were done to scale. And as you looked out over the the view of the ocean, you saw these little tiny things in the distance. They are a long ways away. From here, they're impossible to see because you could just as easily see the New York skyline from a seaside park beach as you could see them. So here's my issue. We shouldn't be taking a position on this. I completely agree with Mike. The L B I people that are running around like Chicken Little screaming about this thing, pound sand. This is not seaside parks issue. The information that's in that resolution is nonsense. And if you pass this resolution and you send it off to the people, you're sending it off to what you're doing to the people in Trenton is you're spitting in their eyes. You're telling them, we know better than you do because we believe this stuff that anybody who spends any time digging into what the facts are is going to come quickly up with, this is nonsense. And what's that going to tell them? It's going to tell them something about this town and the people that run it. And I'd be embarrassed if I were you. And the town should be embarrassed if this thing passes and you send it to anybody. And the town should be embarrassed if this thing passes, and you send it to anybody. If you do it quietly and don't tell anybody, well, I don't care about that. So, what I want to encourage you to do is take that resolution and tear it up and throw it away, because it doesn't make any sense, and all it's going to do is tell the people in Trenton and the people in Washington that we're crazy, and they should do things like, well, um, we're going to hand out money for fixing boardwalks. Well, let's give it to Seaside Heights, let's not give any to Seaside Park. They're crazy there. And the people in Washington that we might want to get on our side, so that we can maybe convince Corps of Engineers that, that their bizarre idea about SAV protection is something that needs to be changed, well, we're not going to get any cooperation if we do things like this. So, I think in the interest of trying to solve the problems that we need to solve here, like flooding, to get people to cooperate with us, take this resolution and tear it up and throw it away. It does not send the message you want to be sending to the people, we need to get to cooperate with us in the state and the federal government. And on the meeting tonight, we're talking about this, that was a great idea, if you could have figured out a way to make it last about thirty minutes. But it was a good concept, and I appreciate that you did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, do you have, Scott?
Yeah, you're quick. Um, Bay Area and 21 Ice Street, as far as the lightning alert, um, I think it's a great idea, I really do. I would like to see it twenty-four seven, if possible, especially during the summer. We may not need it during the winter, because we don't have that many electrical storms. But, as you know, the gentleman who passed was like seven o'clock at night, and it, I think, Karen, you told me the siren would go off initially, but the strobe light would stay on, as long as the lightning is within ten miles. And I, I think, I think it's a great thing, I think it is a town thing, I think there are too many people during the summer that come down that are not aware of the weather. They don't keep an eye on the sky, they don't recognize when a storm is coming, if they're on the beach, or they're walking around, and they don't want to be sheltered. And I would hate to see someone else die, because they were hit by lightning, and it could be avoided by using that system. So, I, I suggest it be extended beyond beach hours. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. With that, we'll cut.
I want to come up and say something, and everybody opens up their mouth. Anybody else who's up here, they should turn out loud two or three times. It's a little rude, and this is a little disrespect. How about that? Okay? And you can put that on the record. Now, okay, everybody got that? All right, every single time, it's the same story, it's old. I've got respect for you and everybody else when you come up, okay? Pacific. Okay, now, let's get started. As far as the windmills goes, I am very excited about the mayor and council passing this resolution about the windmills. Okay, I'll tell you why, because that little speck, okay? That, that little speck that we're going to see off the New Jersey coast, off of Seaside Park.
No, off of Atlantic City.
Wherever it is, off of, off of the Garden State, anywhere in the state. New Jersey's been a dumping ground, okay, for New York and everybody else for the past hundred years, okay? And we're taking a position that, that we don't want this here, okay? And that's why the mayor and council, I encourage them to sign it, vote on it, post it, send it to Trenton, okay? Because Trenton is the same, is exactly where we want it to go, because right now, as we speak, as of two days ago, I have pictures of a cell tower, okay, planted right in the middle of Island Beach State Park, okay, under the same administration that wants to put the windmills off the New Jersey coast. Right off the Taiso, we need a 5G tower. Hit the ride tomorrow and take a look at it, because that's the direction that the state parks going in, and that's the direction that the rest of the state's going to go in. We're going to industrialize everything. You're the very person that wants to protect the, the natural habitat, but in one hand, but on the other hand, you're, you're okay if you see, um, visual river off the New Jersey coast. That freighter that's going by, it's temporary, okay? To me, and to many other people, the, the windmills are not something that we need here in the Garden State. Let them do them off of all the other states, okay? Great. It's not going to lower my electric bill, it's not going to lower anybody else's electric bill, okay? Mike, you put me some money in somebody's pocket along the way, but I'm not seeing it here at Seaside Park. So, I think it's a good idea that the mayor and council votes on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Thank you, Al. Thank you, sir. I would entertain a motion from the council to close the work session and then immediately go into the regular...